Meeting. Also present, our city manager Fletcher, Assistant City Attorney Roberts, City Clerk Faust, Assistant City Clerk Jimenez, Police Chief Garrison, and Deputy Fire Chief Hurley. Commissioner McDowell, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, do we have any public comment for this meeting? I think I see some folks teeing up to do that, so let's give them a minute.
So I spoke yesterday. Good morning to each and every one of you up there. What I want to say today is in 100% support of city staff, city manager, all commissioners. I know we're working on the budget. I know we have 100% focus on Northport moving in a very, I think, strategic way. Citizens need to wake up that are out here, that are limiting in their vision. What we need to do as a city to grow and be a functional city financially, we're at 8% in commercial. Look around, the cities that are working right now are not at 8% on the commercial side. We need to be at 18% to 20% or each and every one of you as citizens here in Northport will be paying higher taxes. It's inevitable. We have got to change it. We've got to get focused. There's got to be some compromise out there in the zoning world. There has got to be conversations, real conversations, and people need to hear factual evidence of what's going to happen. It cannot be sugarcoated. We've got great staff. We've got great people doing. And I told you yesterday, and I'm going to tout it as many times as I can from now on, we've got to count on the experts to get us through this. And you guys right now are our experts. And keeping our taxes low is a vital part, working with the building and zoning department and getting the, I think, the foothold that we've had on not working with builders well out of the way. Just talked to a resident who is still struggling to get his house ready today because of trees. Tired of trees because we can't seem to get out of our own way. I want to keep trees. I love Alice. I love what you do. I'm very supportive on getting this stuff done. But when you talk to people and it's costing them their money and their time to build their house because we can't get a system into place, and I know we're working on it, I've spoken to you guys about this, but we've got to get on the ball. We've got to get focused, and we have got to fix the commercial side of things, or we're going to be in trouble, and that's to every citizen out here. Thank you.
That's it. Okay, then, let's move along to general business. Before we get started, I just want to say that the important part of today's work is to make sure that our city spending is in line with the strategic objectives that we all identified a couple of months ago. If you think spending is out of whack at a line item level, it's certainly appropriate to identify that, but today we'll not be giving staff direction on what they should be spending at a line item level. So let's try to keep it strategic and high level. And with that, let me announce item 23-0949 and turn the floor over to City Manager to introduce that topic.
Was there any reading in the title? I don't have it.
Discussion and possible direction regarding fiscal year 2024 city manager's recommended budget.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Well, good morning, and thank you all. Good to see you all, and thank you for all of your engagement in the budget process so far. As I kick this off, I know that we've all been to many meetings and many venues, and we've had a lot of community engagement efforts. So we have to thank all of our commission members for being present and positive during those discussions. We also want to thank the community for what they've done, as well as far as reaching out with questions and us providing answers and information that hopefully has gotten them, as the speaker said, a better understanding of where we're going and how we're going to get there. I first want to thank the efforts of our finance team budget in conjunction with our departments and our other leadership team. Everyone has put a lot of effort and thought into this budget to make sure that there is a good alignment with the strategic pillars and the priorities and the outcomes that we talk about that we want to be as a city. I believe living those values are how we put our money where our mouth is. And I believe that the budget is the most important piece of us holding ourselves first most accountable to the community on their behalf. They are entrusting us with their taxpayers' dollars, and we treat that responsibility very seriously. And we thought, and we believe, that a lot of work has, good work has gone into this budget that has been proposed to you. It is not perfect, but I believe there are some things that we can highlight in it that will show you that it has been thoughtful and intentional, even as you have heard and seen during some of the community engagement efforts, whether we were in person or on Facebook or recorded it. We put it out there in a way that people could see and hear, even if they weren't physically available, but in a way that we can meet them where they were, so that it could be convenient for them. And we believe that that's important, because we know that people are busy, they have lives, and they have limited time to put into some of our budget processes. The first thing I want to talk about is an article that was in one of the papers on yesterday that had some information in it. And the tone of the article and some of the information in the article, I just want to address as it sort of relates to what we have done here in the city for our budget process so far. In the beginning, it talks about our increased property value of 16.9%, which we know is still something that we're very proud of, because that means that people want to be here in our city. And as the second fastest growing city in the country, we know that we are a desirable place to be. So using that 16.9% is a tool and a helpful one that we have processed for this particular budget that you're looking at. You might remember that the year before it was 26%. So we did not believe that that number would duplicate itself. I don't think anyone would. It was very abnormal last year, but to have a 16.9% and then to be able to use that revenue as it relates to balancing our budget, we took that as a success. It also says this year's budget calls for the use of $2 million of ARPA funds from the reserve fund balance. That is the current year that we're in, which is fiscal year 23. The fiscal year 24 budget did not use any one-time revenue sources. It did not use any millage rate increase, nor did it use any fund balance reserve to balance it. And that is not the first time in a decade. As the article says, that's the first time in nearly three decades that that has been done, that we could go back and track. So that is a phenomenal accomplishment. And the reason why we believe that it's the first time in 30 years is because we have sort of shifted our budgeting approach. So normally, you would see fund balance being used, but in a year where we're coming off of Hurricane Ian, we had to be especially sensitive to those fund balances, and we were. So allowing ourselves to balance our budget, we, and more specifically, our talented finance team led by the Finance Director, took a fiscally conservative approach to our expenses. And even when you look at what was done by the team and how we made sacrifices, there's still over $4.2 million that was cut from this budget to leave it to where it is in front of you. And what does that mean as far as how do we provide the level of services that our citizens are accustomed to? It means that we will take a stronger oversight in our budget management process. We are not going to ask for the funds from you up in advance, but we are going to have regular meetings where we talk to our leadership team about what they need and how's it going, how's their spending going. And then we will come back to you, give you regular updates. And if there's any adjustments or help that we need, we will raise our hands, because we're not going to let our citizens not get what they need. We're not going to let our leadership team not have what they require to work. But a little bit more effort on the front end, I think, will help us all go a long way. Because when you look at the actual fund balance of the reserves for the last few years, it has increased. So that means that you really just need to wait for it. You really need to just see if you can get through some of the process without asking for it in advance. That was our approach. It's a little bit different than what we've done in the past, but if you remember last year, we aligned our budget with the outcomes that you identified as your priorities. And this year, we're just taking it a little bit further. So as, hopefully, you will see the budget keeps growing in the process of development, and that's a very good thing. Some other information from the article, talked about positions and Florida and Light, and you will make some of those decisions regarding some of the actual rates that we're going to ask for you to consider. But the bottom line is that, you know, this is our story. We don't want someone else to write our story on our behalf. So what we're going to do is make sure that as we go through our process, you are the ones that write the narrative. We have written our part. We're going to answer a lot of questions. We're going to provide a lot of information, but it's not going to always be the easiest answers and choices. But that's the role that we're in, and I know I embrace it, and I know you embrace it. But as the citizen comment said, the commercial prowess of this city is phenomenal. But we are not where we need to be. When we talk about the 28% that we need to be at, we're not close to that, but we have the opportunity and the ability to grow there. So keeping that in mind, as we go from the 85,000 people that we have now to the 100,000 people we'll have in a couple of years, the 250,000 build out that we know we have, that growth is critical. And keeping our eye on that now, I think, is what we have seen that we've done as a team, what you're doing as a leadership team, and we are following your lead. Some of you have heard me during our budget conversation publicly talk about a proposed or an anticipated millage rate increase. And I'm very happy to say that we completed this budget under your guidance of not increasing that millage rate. But I've been preparing for what I believe is going to happen as a necessary byproduct of our growth, which is the need for more revenue. But we may have years like this where we're able to keep doing this. My Finance Director has told me that, well, maybe not so fast, you know, based on some of her projections, we may not need a millage rate increase. But I would encourage you all to just remember that if and when we do get there, it was a thoughtful process to get there. We don't want you to think that we do make these decisions lightly, and we've all talked about publicly some of the bonding scenarios and situations that we need. There's a lot going into where this city is going. So we have very open, and I hope people will think, transparent conversations, and we look forward to keeping those going. We're going to be very, very diligent in the work that you send us back to from today. We know today is not the end of the race, but only the first budget workshop. So we'll go through half of the departments and areas today. We'll go through the other half tomorrow. We'll go back to put more pen to paper based on your recommendations and things that you need, but we will make sure that we make this process as good as one as possible, and we look forward to your leadership throughout the entire process. Okay, so now we will jump to the slide deck if we could, and we will go to, there we go. We will start at the beginning and start talking about some of how the city looks as an overview for the budget that we recommended to you all. So earlier this winter, you actually worked with our consultant Doug Thomas from SGR, and we talked about our priorities. You may remember that he introduced a seventh pillar to you all, which was disaster recovery. He edited that pillar. He put some information into that pillar. You guys have never actually sat down as a board to weigh in on those edits, and I believe you have some information under that pillar that you may want to discuss once we get to the end of this particular piece of the slide deck. But what we did as a team was, there were seven pillars with about 70 different priority rankings, which is too much. That's a lot for anyone to sort of wrap their head around. So you have to prioritize your priorities. And what we did, we took the top three from the seven pillars, which gave you a total of 21. There was no other magic way to do that other than that, in my opinion. And what we led staff in the direction of was to make sure that each pillar had its top three represented in what you're seeing. So there was no other weighting, no other prioritizing. It was truly how you, as a board, ranked those top three pillars, I mean, top three priorities under those seven pillars. When you look at safe community and you see that providing efficient and effective staffing, that relates directly to some of the personnel costs that we've included in our budget. You may remember that police had a consultant come in and provide where's the trajectory going of police staffing in order to make this city behold to where it doesn't have to play catch-up. That number was actually 22 for this year. And 22 was a lot. Our Police Chief, Chief Garrison, was involved in the process of shaving that down to 16. And in order for us to get to the levels that the consultant recommended, we need to do probably 16 next year, and then it's 12 per year after that. And just to remind you, that consultant was brought on board to do work for us as we are looking at the expansion of our police station, because they are actually running out of space. And that's just, again, a byproduct of the actual city growth that we're having. And as that growth happens, we know that crime rates are a concern. We don't want to play catch-up and be a city that has problems and then address them. We have to stay proactive and ahead of that from a staffing curve. We believe that the public safety staffing levels that you have within your budget, including from fire and rescue, are in alignment with what that vision needs to be like. The safety of our citizens, no one wants to be here if they don't feel safe. So I know I'm preaching to the choir, so I'll get off of it, but feeling safe is the first and most paramount thing that anyone wants to feel and live in. And I will say that feeling safe actually will continue to contribute to the assessed value growth of our community. I've heard people say that, oh, you know, well, you know, my property assessment is going up. You definitely want it to go up. If it goes down, then we have a different set of problems we have to deal with that I don't think any of us want to tackle. The quality of life pillar, most importantly, people think about that as it relates to our parks and wrecks, because they are a large department. They have a lot of expenses, but they provide a lot of value back to the community. There is a give and take there, and there is a balance for everything. We don't want you to ever think that we are just growing for the sake of growing and adding for the sake of adding. But when you look at some of the quality of life expenses that you have there, the availability for things to do while they feel safe sort of go hand in hand. And we want to make sure that we support the community efforts that promote natural character and enhance our identity for our neighborhoods. We've talked about how we can become a better community of unity. I think that we're moving in that direction, and that's through an intentional, direct effort of conversations that are not always easy. So I've seen a lot of you in those conversations, and I thank you, and I know that we all share that same vision of making sure that the community actually gets to where we want to go. The amenities and resources and cost savings through community partnerships and nonprofits, it is no secret that I believe in my heart that we could do more with our nonprofits in this community. It is a shame, those are my words, that we don't do more, and I would love for us to do more, but I also believe it needs to be done in the right way. Just because I have a vision of what I want doesn't mean I need to move on it as I think I should. That's where the conversation with the board comes in, and I get better direction and provide more details. And I'm trying to learn from some of the missteps that I have had since I've been here without taking it to the point where thinking that, well, we're not on the same page. I think we're on the same page. It's just how do we get there? And if we talk about it some more, and I think there's some programs that we can do to increase that, I think we'll get there sooner rather than later. When we talk about economic development and growth management, I almost think this one speaks for itself. But when we talk about the economic growth of this city, we have a lot of partners. You have been in meetings this week earlier, bless you, that have been with some of those partners. And the excitement about our partners to be in the city of Northport is tremendous. And we're talking about people who have stayed with us through some not-so-easy times and could have given up on the city of Northport, but they have stayed, and I thank them every time I have a meeting with them for not giving up on Northport, because we really do need them. The sustainability through this city runs through economic development. The taxpayers, citizens cannot put all of these expenses on their shoulders. We have to lessen that burden. But then, of course, we know as we get to the next pillar, which, touching on briefly, we have to do it balanced and responsibly. We have to recognize the environmental benefits of this city. And if one of our most recent surveys taught us nothing, it says that, hey, we would like for the environment and the trees and all the wildlife to be a heavy consideration of what we do. It doesn't mean you can't do what needs to be done in order to protect the future of the city, but you have to be thoughtful about it. And I think that you're going to see a lot more of that as we have some of our conversations in the future. Back to the business climate of innovation with the EDC and the county and some of our other partners who have stepped up to say, hey, we want to play a role in Northport's success. All of us have heard that, and we're seeing that. And we talk about the multiple hospitals that's coming through this area and how that's going to bring the need for jobs. And we're working with our friends at STC, the community college, and, you know, and soon to be approaching the school board and other stakeholders who we all need to sort of roll in the same direction. It's a very exciting time for the city of Northport. It is a time where we are charged to have the future of the business and the innovation of this city in the palm of our hands. And people are going to look back and say, well, what did we do in 2023? And we need to make sure that that answer is everything that we could. Everything is not in our control, and those things that are outside of our control, we don't tend to worry about. But we have to make sure that when the people look at us as the responsible people we are and the roles that they put us in, that we've done the best and the most that we can possible. With the environmental resilience and sustainability pillar, I would just highlight and thank you for the four positions that you approved yesterday for the Natural Resources Division, as we got more explanation on that on one earlier day this week by Director Ray. Yes, we believe that she did a phenomenal job of explaining the details of the program, and I'm grateful for her. And your reception to that is much appreciated, because we are in firm approval with the Economic Advisory Board that a better connection between the city staff, particularly those that we're going to bring on board who are subject matter experts, will take those efforts to a higher level. You as a board can't be in every conversation with all of your advisory boards. I know you have many, and you meet with them on a semi-frequent basis, but our staff, our team, is going to do more of having a connection to that, so we can create a comprehensive plan, not only for a tree strategy, but other planning strategies, other canopy reports and studies and things that we need to do to make sure that when people say, hey, are you taking care of the environment? That yes, we are. The infrastructure and facilities integrity, we have to be mindful. I know that we see everywhere on the news these days of infrastructure failing us. A building just collapsed in Iowa. There was an accident on Philadelphia I-95, which is a little bit different. But the infrastructure of this country is crumbling, and it's due to kicking the can down the road. We do not, cannot, and will not have the city of Northport in that conversation. So if we know that and we mean that, taking care of our infrastructure, our roadways, and making sure that our transportation systems are in alignment with our growing volume has to happen. We can't keep growing with all these people and not take care of our infrastructure. We know about Price Boulevard. We know that there's a grant out there with the county for CDDG disaster recovery amounts of $200 million that's coming to those who were impacted by Hurricane Ian, especially those in low to moderate incomes. That just screams the city of Northport, and we're happy to have those conversations. The county has been very engaging with us through Chairman Cut singer, as well as Commissioner Lewis. We've had at least one or two meetings with them. They've asked us for our feedback on some project information. That project information will not be decided by city staff. It will be decided, I believe, by the residents through some open community forums. And we look forward to being included in that. And I know that you look forward to making sure that projects that you believe should be on that list are included as well. So that is very important. I think it's critical to highlight that as a revenue source that should help the city of Northport get to where we want to go. Good governance, that is the final pillar. Oh, excuse me, disaster recovery is the final pillar, but good governance. You have put together a talented, high-performing team, and I can't say that enough. And the people that we've been able to bring on board are a direct reflection of the vision and the leadership that you guys have set. We don't control that. We can only follow the directions that you give. And I believe that the qualifications and the successes of our team speak for themselves. But thank you so much for believing in us as a team, the support that you gave our police department recently to adjust their pay scale in the middle of a year. Says a lot about how you feel about our law enforcement. The fact that we were able to balance this budget and keep in a potential merit increase for our employees says a lot. We all remember, all of those who are old enough to remember when either a hiring freeze or a pay increase freeze, or furloughs, or transfers, we all remember those days. Let's not think that they were so far along ago. That sets government back. And for this team to be able to say, hey, we're going to take care of our employees because they're that important while we fulfill our mission, I think speaks to a very high volume of how you lead at the top. So we will continue to do that. We will continue to make sure that we provide high-quality services for those in our community and not sort of be apologetic for that. The last and new pillar is disaster recovery and response. And this one is specifically related back to, I should say Hurricane Ian, but we know that Hurricane Ian is not the only hurricane that we had. As we began this budget process, it was clear that we needed to make sure that we see, well, where were we at? What was the impact of Hurricane Ian on this city? And I believe we boiled it down in a pro forma that we shared, about $5 million was the amount of impact to this city from our reserves, not counting the money that we will get reimbursed back from the federal government or the state government. And so that means that we had to be prepared, and we were prepared. And that was because you set thresholds, and there were balances there above and beyond those thresholds that protected us from that hurricane experience. Guess what? We could have another one this year. What's going to happen then? Again, that's the foresight and the vision that we're trying to put out there so that we can be prepared as much as possible. We have to look forward. We have to acknowledge that the hurricane that happened, it had a huge impact on our operations. What you're going to see from a lot of our department head leadership as they come down and speak to you over the next two days is to talk about what was the impact of Hurricane Ian on their departments. We're not going to dive into each and every single detail, but I think it's important to acknowledge what they've been through. And a lot of people, especially those not in this room, or maybe those not watching, saw the recovery that we did from the hurricane and said, oh, well, that was easy, or you guys got through that pretty okay. It wasn't easy. We are still going through it, and it has an impact on what we're doing now. And I just don't want that to be lost. I think if we don't tell that story, again, someone's going to tell the story incorrectly for us, and we need to say it in our own words, in our own way. So, Madam Mayor, I'm going to stop right there, because I think you all might have some comments on the 21 priorities that were just highlighted there, since you, as a board, have never talked about them, or if you want to see them presented differently, or if you have any questions on how you rank them, to discuss that amongst yourselves. But when you look at them all, we can tie a program, an outcome, a line item dollar to just about all of it, to answer any questions that you may have, and of course, or in the direction that you would like to lead us.
Thank you for your very eloquent comments, City Manager. I'm opening up the floor to my fellow commissioners for any comments or questions. I'm not seeing any, but I have one, and it's related to our strategic priorities. I noted as I went through them that, and it's economic development in particular, economic development had many very highly weighted priorities that aren't highlighted. So I wanted to get some feedback from my fellow commissioners. I think that identifying the top three priorities per pillar is very appropriate, but it occurred to me that maybe we should consider that any priority that's weighted higher than fill-in-the-blank eight, nine, 10 should also be highlighted to ensure that we don't miss anything that we all agree was a major priority. So if anyone has any feedback on that, Commissioner Stokes?
Yeah. I noticed the same thing. And, you know, all the priorities that we've listed here, well beyond just the three for each of these pillars, are highly important to us. And by taking only three from each of the categories, I guess, too, I'm trying to get a feel for how staff and looked at, you know, while each pillar is of a very important nature to our city, nature to our city, depending on where we are, pillars have some different levels of priority, which again goes to Mayor's comment that there may be certain pillars below or certain priorities below the top three in each that are of significant importance. And I wouldn't want them to be lost, that's all. So if you guys could speak a little to that, just so we understand, are we losing track of those priorities below the top three? And I don't think we are, but I think it's worth addressing.
Yes, sir, and yes, ma'am. I would say that we're not losing them, but if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. And when you have 70 different priorities over the course of the seven pillars, the volume does get kind of high. The ones that are not highlighted in the 21 does not mean they're not getting their due attention. They're just meaning that if you were to look at this as a snapshot of the rankings that you did, and of course, you can have the entire 70, we can show you how they were ranked out, but at some point, someone would say, well, tell me of the seven pillars that you have, how are you prioritizing your efforts mainly and inclusively through your budget in order to achieve those? And this is what I would call the first step in that conversation. The other priorities that were ranked were not excluded, but as I would caution us all, if we leaned too much to too many rankings of one particular pillar, it may look like that we are excluding another pillar and saying it's not as important. And globally, we can all agree upon, because I think that we all feel this, all seven of them are important. And because some were weighted more in one particular pillar, I don't believe we want to push other ones out because of that. Maybe you expand it instead of saying the top three, maybe take it to the top five. Maybe that would help you in what you're trying to get. However you want us to present it, we can. We can tell you that without a doubt, we've included them all into our process of thinking because not only do we have them as priorities, we include them in the rankings that we put online through our dashboard that shows you the progress of our strategic plan. And I think that can't be lost as well. We didn't put it into the slide deck this year, but you'll all remember that through our finance director and our team, we now have a dashboard that shows you the outcomes of those pillars, performance measurements and how we're doing. And we're very proud of that transparent, public display. So they're not going to be lost. This was just a ranking for you to see, hey, what are my colleagues thinking about as far as how we want to rank our priorities in our seven pillars? Oh, yes.
Are you all set, Commissioner?
Yes.
This is Eve Sweeting, who did the actual compilation, and she just has a quick comment, Madam Mayor.
I just want to speak to the math, if I may. So Eve Sweeting, Performance and Accountability Officer. The reason that the numbers are higher in some categories and some pillars is strictly because that pillar had more priorities in it. So, for example, Safe Community has only six. So the highest number any priority could get would be a six. Economic Development has 16.
Right.
So therefore, a six is not equivalent, you know, in those categories, if that helps with the math part of it.
Helps a lot, thank you.
That does, thank you.
I love the way staff comes up and gives simple answers. And you gotta give love and I talk about it, it's like, you don't even understand what he's saying.
Chop liver.
Great. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah. I understand how important strategic planning is to this budget. I'll be honest with you, I think this is so important that we need to have another conversation at another time between now and July's workshop so we can focus on the task at hand, which is the budget. We can, City Manager will get that feedback at that other meeting between now and July to help with the July's budget. But looking at the schedule, and I know, Mayor, how you are stickler of time, we're already behind schedule.
We agree with Commissioner McDowell and we put this not behind schedule.
Holy shit, hell froze over. Oh, my God. Don't make me whack my gavel.
We would have loved to have had that meeting prior and we do apologize based on timing and having that meeting, it all cascades down into our commitments, but you not having an opportunity to have that discussion and this is your first time seeing it, we just wanted to make sure that you knew where it fell into the process wheel of the budget compilation. But we agree.
Yeah, sounds like at least an agenda topic at a future meeting. Okay, Vice Mayor, you have a comment?
Yes. First, I wanted to thank you for that explanation. It's great. And I wanted to point out, I'm wearing my tie in honor of you. I comment on the City Manager's tie every single day and your wonderful finance team here. And actually, it's born to my dad. That's how old this thing is. Anyway, I wanted just to comment about the pillars that I think that's such a great system that we know what we should be focused on and what, where we should channel our money first, because those are our priorities. But yes, I appreciate the bringing out the math, how that was figured out, because it doesn't mean we're discarding those other priorities. It's just that this is what we're going to work on first and as they get checked off or we start on them, then we know where we have to go because that gives us direction. So I think that this pillar, I don't think that was ever done before, right? This whole pillar strategy idea is great because this way we can justify, this is why we are spending money in this area. So I really appreciate doing that whole strategy pillars idea.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Emmerich?
Yeah, the way that I looked at this and the strategies is basically a generalization of all of the concepts within the pillar. Yes, they may be top ranking, other ones may be lower ranking, but yet all of the aspects of the pillar, I believe, are taken into the aspects of our budget. And I believe we discussed that in other meetings going through and that nothing is set to the wayside. This is just a starting point. So that's the way I took it and that's the way I looked at it, Mayor. Thank you.
Right, thank you for that, Commissioner. Okay, I don't see any other lights on. So, City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
David Duval, citizen of Northport. I'm here for one specific reason. I don't have much time lately. It's become the scariest resource in my life. But I read some of the city manager's proposed budget cover letter. And one of the items that I noticed was a possible increase in the utility tax from 6% to 10%. Couple of years ago, that was 2%. That is a regressive tax. A regressive tax means that, City Manager, I apologize, we don't want to use you as an example, a city manager has a pretty high income. And to go from, he has a $200 utility bill every month. And to increase the city's tax on that utility bill, something that you need to live on. This is Florida, you need air conditioning, you need electricity. For him to go from a $200 bill to a $220 bill, he might not notice it that much. But the information I'm going to give you is from the 2021 U.S. Census Bureau report. Back in 2021, we had approximately 28,218 homes in the city of Northport. 6,785 of those homes were multifamily homes and that was a 15 and a half percent increase from the year before. That suggests to me that people can afford to live in a single-family situation. And it's only getting worse. We all know what inflation is, okay? My time's short here, I don't want to waste any more of your time. Basically, do not increase this utility tax. If anything, get rid of it and consider an idea of partnering with a company that maybe manufactures solar panels. We have those in the United States. Get them to come here, give them some kind of a deal so that all of the houses that are built in the city of Northport can have lower utility bills, not increases to their tax. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Moving on to 23-0993, Human Resources Department?
We actually weren't finished with the slide deck, but if you will...
Oh, do you want, oh, I thought you were done.
No, you let us get there.
Okay, thank you.
We're headed there. And I think it will answer some of Mr. Duval's comments that he just made. So when you look at this slide right here, it talks about some of the bigger picture overview, the taxable value of 2023 going up to $8.4 billion, which is the 16.89% increase that we've talked about. The current millage rate staying at 3.7667 of $30 million and increase of that of 4.3 million dollars. And half of that you can see is the amount of new construction, which again shows the value of the growth of the city. This table right here, the 10-year taxable value history also shows the growth of the city. We love the way this curve continues to go up. I thought about it this morning. If we looked at it back a few years ago, you might see something that was not so consistent as what you're seeing now, which again goes to prove the growth curve of the city, where we're going and how we should value that. The major general fund revenues, you can see here, the electricity taxes on there, the electric franchise fee, but by far, the biggest one that you're going to see on this particular slide is going to be your property tax. And what I would say and challenge us all to remember is that what we, our approach this year was, we were leaving money on the table in other areas. If we're not going to raise the millage rate, which was the budget guidance of the board, then we needed to look at other opportunities to catch it up. So consequently, let's flip the coin to next year. If and when you do have to raise the millage rate, then that's when you would leave some of these other opportunities alone because you can't raise them all at the same time. That would be a lot to put on the citizens and we know and we understand exactly Mr. Duval's point, which was that, hey, look, it's easier for some and harder for others. And all of us either are there or have been there and we need to respect that particular point of view. When you look at some of the other key changes of the general fund, we want you to keep in mind, not only the 2.5 CPI adjustment, but the merit of the employees, which we talked about, the increase for police, which we cannot say thank you enough, our new positions. And then we talk about the increase of the tax that was referred to, was the 6% going to 10% for six months. The big thing about that we want to talk about is, well, where does that compare to those around us with that same 6%? Now, first of all, long-go key is lower than us in millage rate and that's because they have a different demographic of financial population. Nice is what I can say to that. But when you look at where we are, look at where we are. We're at the bottom of this as it relates to millage rate. And I believe it was Vice Mayor White who said she remembers when that millage rate was five and some change. Yes, exactly, at some point in time. Wouldn't that be something if we had that today? But when you, we did have that five and it did decrease and then you had the growth of the building, most on my mind right now is in the Wollong Park area, that was designed so that you could have an amount of revenue coming into the city that was sustainable. Now that we've had that, they were building it and we're seeing that progress, it is helping us in the way that it was intended by the people who lowered the millage rate X number of years ago. But when you look at this water category here and you see that we were at 0% and I think more than half of everyone else was already charting something. You look at the 6% that we're at electricity tax and you can see almost everyone else is already at the maximum of 10%. We are playing catch-up. And as long as we are playing catch-up, we are leaving money on the table. So when someone says, why are you raising these rates? It's because they truly have not been caught up with those around us in the past. And the reasons for that, I were not here for all of them, you probably were not here for all of them, but we now have to understand that we have to not be able to leave money for the city on the table while recognizing what the citizens are going through as we ask them to provide more in those particular areas. The general change in fund balance, this is a quick snapshot that shows you, I will point your eye to the far right, the 2024 proposed change in fund balance, which is the fifth line item down, that big fat zero, right there is one that we're focused on and we're very proud of that. When you look at 2023's estimated amount of the loss of $6 million, that's the fund balance that we had to provide for the Hurricane Ian recovery. We will and we're required to and we will have a plan for you at some point during this budget process that shows how do we plan to put that money back? Because once you get under a certain threshold, you have to say how you're going to do it over the course of time, other revenue sources. There's no magic there, but you have to be responsible enough to say how you're going to put it back. That's a requirement. So you will see that during our budget process. But if you look at the change in fund balance from 20, which was an additional 1.3, 21 was an actual 4.8, and then 22 was an actual 3.9, we have put money back in there over the last couple of years. And I'm not saying we won't do that for 24, but what I'm saying is that for 24, your leadership team has devised a better strategy than just pulling from the pot in the beginning and holding us better accountable for what we do in our budget and management oversight. And I think I told you all this before, the very bottom line number, the amount above the fund policy of $3.3 million, that number is a very fluid number. And the ladies to my left can probably tell you why some, if not all of it, has been spoken for in the upcoming months. But again, we don't know everything we don't know and now we want to make sure that we actually balance and budget better. This general fund overview, Madam, is just 74 million, which shows our entire budget and how it calculates out. The general fund budget by strategic pillar, this is important to show you exactly where the money is that you are placing in your budget. Safe Community, no surprise, is number one. And we have balanced these strategic pillars and budget distributions based on our last year's conversation. But what you do want to see is a similar theme. And if there's a theme in there that you say, wait a minute, this isn't growing fast enough, then we go back to the priorities and you say, well, wait a minute. These other ones were priorities, they're not reflected in the pillar distribution of the general fund. We need to make some changes. And that's how some of that happens as well, while keeping everything in alignment with each other. The budget proposals by strategic pillar, of course, general, excuse me, Safe Community is not a surprise there. The one I want to point out that may be a little bit of a surprise is the economic development and growth management. It is at 1% because you right-sized them from a staffing level last year. And now that their staffing levels are where they need to be, we are bringing on the staffing power in order to execute on that particular direction. And they have done a great job and I have to thank the interim manager, Vinnie Mascheranos, for what she has done and how she engages our partners. She is, she's doing very well with keeping that ship on track as we move forward. The all funds by budget priority, we do want to point out here in this slide, that infrastructure and facilities integrity is that important. It really is. We can't say it enough. You approved yesterday a $600,000 on-the-spot budget amendment for our parks and recs maintenance team to get relocated at Dallas White Park. They, I think the words that were used were they were nomads because of Hurricane Ian and that recovery has its consequences. But thank you for approving that and thank you for recognizing that our infrastructure and where we're at and how we're trying to rebuild it is so important to our future. This slide right here just shows you the all funds of budget proposals by pillar, not anything, I would say, new and exciting to see there other than this is how our team sent back in information for their needs. All of their needs did not get into this budget that you're looking at. We do have a lot on the cutting room floor. And I've made a pledge to them that I will not forget that. We're going to prioritize the ones that did not make it to you. And as we have opportunities throughout the years, we will take care of them to make sure that they have what they need. And that, again, is part of our heavier budget oversight process. Road and Drainage District, just pointing out here, the overview of the 2024 fund is $24 million. It includes a change in methodology, resulting in a 25% assessment increase. The Fire Rescue District, they also included a legally required update to their existing methodology, but the fund for that overview is $16 million as well. Solid Waste, the fiscal year '24 recommended budget includes a 10% assessment increase. Total fund overview is nearly $14.8 million. Building Fund overview of $7.7 million. Utility Fund for fiscal year '24 includes a 4.9% increase for wastewater and wastewater. Utility Fund for fiscal year '24 includes a 4.9% increase for wastewater and wastewater, nearly almost $50 million fund overview. Fleet Management, fiscal year '24 fund overview of $6.5 million. And Citywide Staffing by pillar, this is one where, if you remember, which I know all of you do, I said that our numbers for last year would not repeat themselves this year, and they are very similar. And part of that rationale is not only what we need for public safety, but there's seven positions in this fund that are general fund. The others are not general fund, which means they normally take care of themselves through the other enterprise funds that they are located in. I and we will make a case for those nearly seven-ish positions of the general fund, and we will tell you why we need them. Part of us not using any of the reserve fund balance was to show you that we could take care of the staffing needs of the city within the amount of the budget that you gave us, so that if we are able to receive those seven positions now, it will hold a better amount of accountability than oversight for your government team to not sort of pull from the pot and say, hey, I need them in advance. So the strategy of how I was going to allow you to actually provide us those positions was to say, hey, let us show you that we can manage it within our budget. And we will go through each of the seven as we go through each of the departments, and we'll talk about why do we need those positions, the value they provide, and how we would love to have your support on those. And just kind of just keeps going through all of the different changes in what we've added. Okay, now we're at Human Resources, yes.
Let me just check in with my fellow commissioners. Any other comments based on the second half of City Manager's presentation? I'm not seeing any, so let's move on to Human Resources.
And thank you, Madam Mayor. I know there's not a lot of questions because this budget is perfect, so I can't blame you for not having that.
I wouldn't count on that, City Manager.
Just one minute to finish. So as our HR team comes in, please will join me down here as we talk about the impact of Hurricane Ian. I just, we just want to point out a couple of things. You know, from working with FEMA and Ross Stan, we had a team that was in place from day one of the hurricane, which helped us out tremendously. We didn't have to go out and find that particular vendor, they were there. And so having them and working with our grant management leader, Val Malonowski, we've seen great results in that. You know, some of the early numbers of getting reimbursements were anywhere from five to 10 years to not in our lifetime. And now, some of that revenue is coming our way already. Have we received anything yet? So we've received $12 million already, which I think for the people who have dealt with some of our hurricane recovery efforts earlier.
Pretty good.
Is really, really good. And again, that goes to the quality of work that was done by the team and by the consultant in order to get us there. I know you've all seen the long-term disaster recovery that that same Ross Stan Solutions has produced into our community, so we are feeding our tentacles down of recovery throughout and deep and through our citizenry. And we're very proud of that. And the invoices, and like I said, the FEMA documentation, if you've never done FEMA documentation, it is not for the faint of heart. It is very, very detailed, and having our staff and team and ability to get that information up as soon as possible is very, very helpful. I am going to talk briefly about their org chart, in case you guys want to jump in and say anything as we keep going. But part of the seven positions that we talked about, three of them are in our Human Resource Department. And when you look at this, I'm looking at the titles of the Administrative Support Specialist, which would be under our Risk and Benefits Manager, as well as the, sorry, as well as the Human Resource General and Recruiter, and our Human Resource Coordinator and Training and Development. So two areas of need that need to be highlighted here are the Training and Development. Not having a Training and Development Specialist on this particular team has been harmful to us in some of the things that we've gone through. The reason why we haven't had it is just because of the pace of our growth. I believe we wanted to ask for it last year, we didn't due to there had to be a cutoff somewhere. So I was strongly encouraged to make sure that we did not do that again, because that relates directly back to the supervisors and the leadership and things that we can get them to do better, that increases our productivity, reduces our abilities to have personnel issues, as well as allows for us to have not the right succession planning, but the right training for the new people that we put in the new positions. Without the right training, you're elevating someone who was good at one level without the proof that they can be good at the next level. And we owe them that obligation, but we need to do it responsibly. And having a training person there to do that is very critical. And the recruiter position, when you look at that one, we have been using a very standard eyes way of recruiting. And in normal situations, when I say normal, I'm going to say half, you might say more, it requires a little bit different skill set when you're talking about advertising for some of our higher-level positions and making sure that we maintain the high bar of high-performing teams that we have. And we're just at that point in our growth curve where we have a small HR department compared to our 850, 826, I think it is, workforce here as we continue to grow. I'll stop right there and turn it over to our Assistant HR Director, Deb Hope, see if she has any feedback or comments to like to add to that.
Good to help, Human Resources Manager. Want to thank you all for listening to our presentation today. Drum hit on most of the key points, but a few things we need to know is with the recruiting position, our people are our biggest asset, and we have got to make sure that we not just recruit top talent, which we've been tasked with doing, but retain top talent. And we need the resources in order to do that. We have some big, heavy hitters coming into our area. Sunseekers is going to be hiring about 1,200 people, and they have some amazing incentives. And we could lose staff, it's not just.
You may need to move that in front of the speaker.
No, the red light's not saying.
There we go. Okay, apologies. As I was saying, you know, we have some heavy competition coming into the area that's going to be taking talent, and we don't want to lose our top talent. We have to have the resources to be able to have programs to keep our staff happy and want to work for the city of Northport. You know, the city manager has tasked us with becoming the best place to work. And in order to do that, we felt we needed to ask for these three positions. So that is what I'd like to say. Sandy, do you want to add anything?
With regards to the admin position for support staff on the Risk and Benefits side, we have been self-insured for two plans for approximately 10 years. There's a lot of management that goes into the day-to-day of the two funds. We are seeing an increase to records requests, we are seeing a large increase to legal requests for productions that are documents that we have to do by the court, which require copying and redactions and things like that. The administrative support staff would give our departments an ability to free up our higher-leveled employees to do more of their tasks that are in line with their job descriptions instead of redactions and copying and stuff like that. So we can talk more about the need if you'd like, but we only have 20 minutes.
So you're done with your comments? Okay, let me open the floor up to any.
Before you ask the Human Resource comments, the other slides, just to mention, one, they're in the Governance Pillar, which all of theirs are there, which makes that kind of easy. When you look at the performance measures, we do want to track and make sure our turnover numbers stay within line. We talk about the cost of training people and them leaving. That's not something the city wants to be known for. It's easy for it to happen, we do not want it to happen here. Maintaining the on-the-job injuries at a lower level, again, very important, again, training. The Human Resources budget summary overall, the only ones that sort of are increasing are not only the ones for the budget proposals, which you have already seen to approve, which the three people are the main priorities in there, the coordinator, the specialist, and the partner. But that training allocation, they all go into that same theme of what we're asking you for. The very last thing I'll say is, before we get to finance, is that you all have had one-on-ones with our benefits consultant. They are here to answer any questions if you did not get them answered during your earlier sessions, but this feeds into all of what we're requesting you for, for your consideration for the Human Resources position. Now we're done.
You're done?
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, consensus for the health insurance is what I'm being.
Okay, let's open it up to any questions and comments before we go there. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, the only question or comment was, I heard that we did not have a training person, and that's why you're requesting one. But there was one that was split between HR and Public Works. So, and it's being reallocated now to go to 100% in Public Works?
Yes, ma'am, I can answer that. So I've been a big advocate for this training person for many, many years. And the reason I was an advocate for it is because, for example, in Public Works, your field staff should be trained four times per year. They're out on the road every day. The accident rate is extremely high in their field, especially solid waste. We're lucky to get them trained once or twice per year. So last year, what we did is we hired 75% a trainer in Public Works, 25% for Human Resources in the general fund. However, the needs are much greater. That's just one example. If you look at our costs that we spend on money for accidents from simple to severe, a lot of those things could be prevented with the proper training, citywide, not just in Public Works, Police Department, Utilities. We have a great amount of people on the road every day, and then your increase of rate for accidents is going to be to be higher. That's just how it is. So we definitely could have that training. That's just for field. Inside, we have many, many things we should be training for, supervisory training, management training, sexual harassment training, the list goes on and on and on. And if we're not preparing our employees properly and giving them the right resources, many things will happen. And the worst thing that could happen is the employee doesn't work out, there's disciplinary issues, things like that. The next thing is, if I could, with respect to the recruiter, we have extremely struggled this past year. We have had to put boots on the ground and go out and do job fairs for many, many departments. We just simply can't get them. The competition rate is high, federal government no longer allows you to go to the Department of Motor Vehicles to get a CDL license. That has been extremely challenging. So having a recruiter to help us with that outside of hiring somebody, and that's very expensive to get recruiting services, having someone in-house would be definitely a plus. Thank you.
Are you asked that, Commissioner?
Yeah, I just also wanted to make sure we were going to have a discussion for the health insurance thing.
Yep, I have that on my list. I don't see any of the comments, so I'll make one comment, we'll go to any public comment, and then I'll be looking for a consensus on the health insurance. I appreciate Assistant City Manager Balia, your comments. I also am a huge advocate of training, and I think it's also, for all the reasons that you mentioned, it has a lot to do with employee satisfaction. And I'm also a big believer in the importance of having career development plans for our top performers. That's another way to keep our top performers engaged and motivated. And I would certainly hope that this training person could be an assist in ensuring that kind of planning and training as well. So thank you for all of that information. I'm not seeing any other lights, so is anyone feeling so moved to give a consensus?
There is no public comment.
Oh, thank you. I mentioned it, and then I forgot it. Thank you for that.
Are we going to have a discussion on it before we try and get a consensus?
Sure. I'm just curious. Yeah, go ahead. Do you want to comment on it?
I can tell you where I'm going with it, and I'd love to hear from my fellow commissioners and their rationale behind where they're going with it. But we have been absorbing the increases in personnel, I'm sorry, in health insurance for the past few years. And everybody's health insurance is going up. And I just, I don't even remember when the last time was that we said, no, we're going to share it or cost allocate it. Maybe we don't do it a 50-50, increase cost allocation, maybe a 75-25. I don't know what that looks like, but for the city to continue to absorb 100% of the cost allocations, it's not equitable to the ones that are paying the bills, and that's our citizens and taxpayers. And I understand that we need to keep personnel, and this might be an incentive, but we also have to look at it as part of the entire employment package, the entire compensation package. So if we either approve it that we split it 50-50 or some variable of it, I would be in support. But to have the city absorb 100%, I am not in support. And that's my thoughts.
Commissioner Stokes.
I believe we're, if I recall correctly, since it was only a day ago, we're looking at approximately a $200,000 number in terms of what we're looking at to decide as to whether the city would absorb it, whether in our budget or whether we were to pass some of it on. With over 800 employees in this city, knowing what the job market is out there and the difficulty in retaining people, I'd hate to lose the bigger picture, which is the cost of losing people, the cost of hiring them, training them, getting them up to speed. Those costs are very often difficult to quantify, but they are, in comparison to this $200,000, they are huge. And so I think when we look at this $200,000, not to diminish the fact that it's $200,000, when compared to the cost of not doing this, I think we run the risk of losing a lot of good people, as is our compensation rates in the public sector are not nearly what they are in the private. So we struggle to keep people. The benefit programs in the city are, I consider, superior to what you might get out in the private sector. And that's a good thing because it helps counterbalance that. So when you look at the overall budget and the fact that we're balancing it and we're keeping things, you know, a millage rate flat and while we're increasing some other user fees, I don't see a big problem. I believe in this overall budget, you've built that $200,000 in as if the city would fully absorb it. I don't see a problem with leaving it in there. I think our biggest resource in the city are our employees, our people. And it's so important that we maintain and continue to maintain that quality of employee. And I'd hate to see us go through all this work only to lose them to our neighboring municipalities and private industry. So that's my take.
Thank you. Commissioner Vice Mayor?
Yes, I just wanted to put in my two cents. Yeah, because we're talking about money. But I, again, I do concur with Commissioner Stokes that absorbing that premium is one of the, it's one of the tools, if not the only tool, that we have to retain employees and to get quality employees, and it's one of the biggest benefits for working for the public sector as opposed to private sector. And as a former public school teacher, I know I, when I first started for Charlotte County, they paid the whole premium, and then it started to become, you had to start paying, but Sarasota County schools did, absorbed it, and we lost a lot of teachers because in the end, you have to look at the whole picture. What am I really taking home at the end of the day? And this is, and as the commissioner said, you know, $200,000 spread out over, what did we say, 800 employees? Is that what we have? You know, it's, I don't want to be penny wise and pound foolish. I mean, it's a great investment in our people and to keep them working. Because again, if we're spending that money to recruit them and then to train them, and they're working, and they have that experience, and then you have to start all over again, you just wasted all that, that money in getting them to the level that they can, they can work at. So that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Emmerich, anything from you?
Yeah.
When you look at our employees, and the vast majority of them are on the lower level of incomes. And they're supporting families and everything like that. I used to be one. And there's still people out there that even if they're at max salary, are making very low wages in the labor force. And I'm not talking about admin or professional. I'm talking about the people out there actually doing the work in the heat. This is their benefit. They work for their benefits, not necessarily the pay. And for us to support them on the benefits is a plus because that's what they're here for. You got private companies out there that are giving sign-on incentives to people to leave here, to go there. And if it's all about the money, they'll do that. But if it's about the benefits, they'll stay here. And I think it is a wise investment on retention of those employees that have worked so hard to work their way up the ladder and possibly make a future here. So, I'm always in support of, go ahead and let's absorb the cost on the city because it is the best benefit for our employees.
Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, I also made a note that the savings to the city, if we passed on that expense, was actually less than 200. It was 189. And when you spread that across, I concur with my fellow commissioners, it's just not worth it. And I'd rather see us cut somewhere else. Our people are our most important asset, and we need to take care of them. So, this is not an area in which I would try to save a few pennies. I think we can look at other areas that would not have such a negative impact to morale and to our employees' budgets. So, I think that's it. Does anyone feel so moved to call for a consensus?
I'll call for a consensus to absorb the cost into the city budget.
Okay, so Commissioner Emmerich is a yes, Vice Mayor?
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Commissioner McDowell?
No, I was looking for compromise, but thank you for the conversation.
Okay, so we don't have a consensus, but you certainly get direction in terms of...
Mayor, we're in budget.
Oh, I thought you said no.
I did, but we're in budget. It's majority rules during budget.
Oh, thank you. Okay, thank you both. Okay, so let's move on. Before we move to finance, any public comment? Oh, we did that. We did that already. Thank you. Okay, finance, item number 23-0994. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As we pull up our finance section, let me first highlight some of their Hurricane Ian impacts. And Director Williams please chime in as you feel necessary. But, you know, processing the information that was unnecessary to recover from the Ian disaster was significant. I cannot express that enough, the time and effort that their team went through, especially what's on my mind from a payroll standpoint of all the different codes and very unique actions to have to deal with that were tremendous. You see that reflection in the additional one personnel request of a payroll staffing team member. We have one in our city right now. And again, the growth has just exceeded that volume. I know that the director deals with a lot of decentralized processes from a business manager's standpoint. But having the payroll team be intact is tremendously important to make sure that everyone is being paid appropriately. The multi-year cash flow analysis to ensure sufficient funds for FEMA, once again, excellent job by the team. The budget amendments to City Commission for additional appropriations for related recoveries. We did see some of that yesterday. We are always working on how to streamline that process to make sure that you see them as infrequently as possible as we manage within ourselves as much as possible. Tracking Hurricane Ian-related governing expenditures to maximize FEMA eligible reimbursement is a huge task. And the ability of the team, and I'll ask the director if she wants to talk about any of that, is greatly appreciated from a standpoint. And now you're seeing, as we said, with the money coming in, the benefits of their hard work.
I think that's a very good overview of it. Finance is not really after the fact in the storm. But our focus during the storm is getting our employees paid timely and making sure purchases, the emergency purchases that are needed for emergency repairs and response can be made easily.
Thank you, ma'am. On this slide, you do see the payroll administrator that would be helpful to the finance department. We believe that it is highly necessary. And based on some of the changes that we're making in standard operating procedures, we believe that it is critical to the future success of the department. On the finance rate, my priorities, I want to point out just the multi-year budget snapshots who show expenses, and they're increasing. And the mileage rate conversation, this priority leads right into what I said that we've been doing and thinking. And I still think that it's important. I want us all to sort of keep our eye on it. I know it's not a huge thing this year because of the budget guidance we received and the mileage rate that we remain stable. But please, let's not think that having a 20, 30 vision of where we're going in the next four to five years is not as important as the budget that you are approving today. When you look at some of the performance measures from our finance team, we want to make sure that we continue to be excellent, continue to receive excellence in financial reporting, as well as our invoices and our documentation that we present on a timely basis. It's critical that we address our financial situations accordingly and not sort of fall out of a timeline period that makes it harder to catch up. And we also want to continue to conduct training sessions, as you see down there with our inter-departmental relational partners. I think that's the right way to say it. And that's because, as I said, there is a decentralized model. And the business managers do reside in multiple departments. And that coordination is challenging. But we are going to keep trying to do better to make sure that the department has had what they need. But at the end of the day, there has to be a dotted line back to our finance director because they are responsible for the overall pot of our funding. You look at the budget summary, you will see that it continues to grow, but nothing sort of out of line. In their budget proposals, we talked about the payroll administrator, which is the one position that we're requesting. But also the Lean Six Sigma training, that was a very helpful and successful effort this year. We want to continue that. Benefit of that training means that employees are going to start tackling innovative projects that will allow us to be more efficient internally. I would love to have an innovation team just dedicated to looking at our processes to see how we can use technology and/or better practices to be better. But this Lean Six Sigma, I think, has been very well received by the departments who want to be better and have a higher acumen of making sure that we do things in the most efficient way. Okay? And we'll pause there for questions on finance.
Terrific. The floor is open. Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah. Sorry. Budget proposal 2617 for that training. Why is it fully in the finance department's budget when it looks like they're going to be training 35 people and the finance department only has 25 people? So, why is this not in HR?
Well, it's not an HR function. It's more of the, I think the question would be why is it not cost allocated to the other people in other various departments that are receiving the training? It's not, it's a, it's a specific... Go ahead, let me talk.
It is something that we did last year within the finance budget. It is a part of our performance and accountability function, providing that training. Finance is allocated out through the cost allocation plan. So, it does get charged out in the following year based on actual costs. So, we just chose to have it all in one place. Go ahead and pay for it. We're the one overseeing the training, organizing, and we left it in finance. And then it gets allocated out the next year.
So, of the people that took it last year, I would assume that it's complete? Their training's complete?
Correct.
Well, it isn't a multi-year training of different belts.
It's ongoing.
Yeah, there's different belts involved, like the yellow belt and the green belt. But I think that the first belt, Wade, was done. But in order to complete the training, they need to go through multiple belts.
Are the same employees still here that started this training?
That start, you mean that took the training? Yes, I don't know of any that have left. I don't believe. See, I don't know of any that have left. The next level will be a smaller group of the ones that took the first level this year. That will extend that on, and we'll let Eve speak more eloquently to that. And then we'll be offering another of the first level for a different group of people.
Thank you.
So, yeah, we did have the first group of yellow belt, which was a variety of staff members from all departments. We tried to get representation from every department. I don't believe anyone who took the training has left, but I would have to check with HR. I don't know that specifically. What we did was yellow belt. So, it was a very intensive, as those of you who are in here who took it, a very intensive, full-day training. The next course is a green belt training, which we did budget for this year and do hope to finish in this current fiscal year. So that we actually have a team, a smaller group of people that go more in-depth on the skills. They learn fish bones. They learn how to do more diagnostic training and actually work on a project. So, it's several months long. But the purpose in having more yellow belt training is so that we have more individuals in the city who are familiar with the concepts, who are excited about process improvement, and who come forward with projects that we could work on in their departments to help make it better for everyone.
Thank you. Thank you for the explanation on why it's not in HR. Thank you.
Commissioner Stokes?
Yes, I don't have any real questions regarding your budget. I would just like to take the opportunity to thank your department for all they do. You guys are really top-notch. And with, with what's always in communities like ours, a growing consciousness of the need for accountability and financial reporting. I mean, you guys have done really a great job in managing the dollars for this city. And I think it's worth a shout-out, so thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I just have one comment. I'm delighted with the Six Sigma training. It was a huge deal in the technology companies that I worked for in my career. And any organization whose work is sort of a more complicated process can really benefit from the process improvements that can come from that kind of training. And I remember in our budget conversations last year, it was the first attempt to start aligning our work against goals and having metrics to measure that work rather than being activity-based. And I am a huge proponent of that. And I believe that this kind of training is a very important component to achieving that type of performance-based organization. So, ditto what Commissioner Stokes had to say. Thank you. It's very impressive to see the quality of our staff as we move through this. And so, I am pleased that my fellow commissioners don't want to shortchange our staff because at the end, you get what you pay for. So, are you looking for any direction from us in terms of your budget? Okay, city clerk? Okay, so we will move on if everybody's ready.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor.
To 230995. And this is in the city manager's department, our communications team.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, in the city manager's office, you will see that the impact of Hurricane Ian directly relates to the grants that we were able to pursue and our efforts from that. We have to go back in time just to remember that Ms. Van Analsky was a team of one for a very long time. And you increased her to three right before the hurricane. And some of them were hazed in their onboarding during the hurricane process, and they still stayed with us. And she has a tremendous group who worked very hard to pursue money. We talked about that during the EAV conversation. We've talked about that during the Warm Little Springs conversation. We know that there's money out there, and that team is paying for itself, you know, over and over based on what they bring into this city. So, we are, we are so grateful and excited for them and for your ability to allow them to have expanded their staffing over the last year since we asked for it last summer. Communications, which is led by our communications manager, Mr. Jason Barlong, who has joined me down here. The emergency operations center was a huge piece of what we did during the hurricane. And again, he had just gotten here as well during that process. And the lessons learned from how he had to stand up the people to the reaction to the people. And I think we've heard a lot from the citizens regarding what we could do better and/or differently as it relates to that significant type of disaster. And we look forward to implementing those one day. It's not to be this year, but one day as we continue to be better for our hurricane response. But the biggest thing you're going to see as it relates to Hurricane Ian is the ongoing reorganization of our staff. The communications department needs to be centralized. And I know you just heard me talk about finance being decentralized in a way. Everything cannot be decentralized. And when you're talking about communications, people that can, who can and need to be sharing information and on a very timely and minute-by-minute basis, having them together under one umbrella is critical. They're actually housing out of a communications bullpen in 302 now, which is on our third floor, where we had a conference room that's been renovated by our Public Works Department, where they're all in there and sort of exchanging ideas and information so that they can be up to date and in tune with each other. That's critical. And we're looking forward to the model and some of the positions that we're going to talk about in the next slide is going to punctuate that. But I'll stop right here and see if Mr. Barlong would like to say anything regarding Hurricane Ian response and self-restraint.
Sure, thank you, sir. And thank you, Mayor, Commissioner, Jason Barlong, communications manager. We did learn quite a bit from our experience. We've already done a lot of training with our team identifying our staffing plans.
Let's check your...
Thank you. Not only our team that would staff the joint information center, the group that would be working in City Hall from our communications team, but also the emergency call center, which is a function of our communications team. So, we've done a lot of training prior to this hurricane season to get ready, to improve our plans, to strengthen our partnerships with the media. Obviously, the different platforms that we use through social media were not available. So, strengthening our partnership with the local radio stations to have that available as a way to communicate with our citizens. So, we've made a lot of improvements. We feel like we're in a much better place. Hopefully, we never have an experience like Ian again. But we feel that we're very prepared for the emergency communications function that we provide in a disaster.
Thank you, Mr. Barlong. When we look at the org chart, the org chart here is somewhat of a difference than what you've seen. And that's because we are transferring three positions in. In order to centralize, you got to take them from somewhere and bring them in. And then there's an impact to where you took them from as well as to where you're putting them in. And you'll see that sort of work its way out over this budget as well as the next budget. But the impact here is critical. The multimedia specialist, we do know that social media and our media is a significant part of how this world communicates in this day and age. So, we're trying to catch up to make sure that there is a centralized resource dedicated to that. The community outreach coordinator, the better name for that that we talked about was the community engagement coordinator, which is how we want them to be referenced. We want to make sure that we have the right staff. And in order to break out from what we had, which was a very specific, one-person, represented two different departments model, was more broad-based, where you could have one person covering a multitude of areas so that when there were absences and gaps, there was a better coverage and better, hopefully, outcome, outcomes of what we were actually getting from the engagement of those positions. Again, the right sizing of our structure is very important. We believe that the additional one FTE that we put into this via a budget proposal is very necessary. When we talk about the priorities of the city manager's office, grants and communications, we all know how important that is and how they tie back to the pillars of good governance and disaster recovery. But we also want to make sure that our performance measures are still in alignment. We want to make sure that we receive a high satisfaction rate from our internal surveys that we do. We want to make sure that we continue to submit timely information to the city clerk during our agenda items, which we've been doing better. But we still need, we still have some room to improve, admittedly. But we have to keep trying. And, you know, our success impacts them. So, when we're slow, it slows them down. And then they have to then make sure that they are able to meet their guidelines. So, we own that, and we try to do better. And I think we've done better over the last year. And I think we've done better over the last year, but we still have, like I said, room to grow. But we appreciate them and their patience. The number of community outreach events as a measure and how we engage our community, whether it's me during a speaking tour, whether it's some of the other public meetings that we have to educate the citizens on changes in their community, we take those very seriously. We've also talked about, you know, the master calendar of how we have our events and showing that, you know, well, how can we better tie in the events that the city's responsible for, for others are responsible for, and maybe put them in one location so that the information flow is more fluid. And we did even mention the website improvement, which has been going very well, that Mr. Barlow has been involved with. And you're going to see that. I saw a demo of it maybe a few weeks ago, and it is going to be great. I think that when you see it, you're going to like it. It's going to bring us up to what other people have as we talk about some drone footage and some easier access, some better customer experiences. And that's what we want. That's what we want for everyone who engages through us through a community, I mean, a communication standpoint. Some of the other performance measures that you're going to see, please take some time. And we want to always direct you back to some of our dashboard. And if you haven't been there, truly, just, it's a lot. But, you know, if you play around in it and you see some things in it, it may lead you to some other questions. But it is definitely a significant hub of information of the performance measures of the entire city. And as you can see, the City Manager's Office, the growth there is due to our communications standpoint. One thing that I talked to you about last year through our budget process was the addition of, what I would like to be a special assistant to the City Manager. It is a very young, professional-based role that allows the exposure of all of the different departments throughout the city so that we can grow some leadership from within. That is not included in this year's budget because, again, we had to trim it down and cut it down. But we are thinking of, and our HR department is not here to stop me, from creating a detailed program that would then rotate people who are interested through different departments based on staffing that we already have instead of adding staff to it. We have to expose our young professionals to the different disciplines of this city. You can have a degree in just about anything and find somewhere to love and work in just about anywhere within the city government. And we want to make sure that people have that opportunity. So while we don't have that sort of all the way fleshed out, it is something that I do want to bring back to our team, that we can figure it out and make sure that we actually accomplish it. Here, we're talking about the Outreach Coordinator, the one role that we talked about, the Communications Initiative, the Citizens Academy. We did try to talk a little bit more about that. The Citizens Academy is one where our police and public safety have an academy that our own, very own Commissioner Stokes, I know, is going through right now. But we need something to better expose the citizens to the entire breadth and depth of city government. What would that look like and what would that mean? It would mean that you would have people who are considering running for public office with a better and deeper understanding of what they would be getting into. You all know that what you do is not easy. And people who don't know everything that you go through, you don't know what you don't know. So if we can help by making sure that we start and act on Citizens Academy, we think that that's a great step. And we think that that will help us all in the long run. And I'll stop right there. Is there any question?
Okay. I'm opening up the floor. I see Commissioner Stokes, your light is on.
Yes. I'm glad to see that our communications division has been growing. You know, in this day and age of social media, there is so much opinion and so many complaints and criticisms of city government especially. And our ability to message facts and truth are really, really an important thing. The, you know, being able to communicate costs and financial tracking is real important because it cuts through all the misinformation and allows people to get a little closer to the way government operates, see where their tax dollars are going. And I do agree with the consolidation concept. I think it's important that, you know, we have a cohesive communications plan. And I personally haven't watched this city for almost seven years before I got elected to this commission, and I've seen the struggle there. And I've seen the dramatic change in the last year, year and a half. I mean, there's been just such an improvement in communication. Not everybody always wants to hear the truth and the facts, but nevertheless, they're out there for people to hear. So I know there's a jump in cost, some of it is reallocation, but, you know, it's, in my opinion, is money well spent for a department that is so critical to our city. And the job you do messaging with our media outlets is really important because they, like the public, don't always have all the facts. People tend to read what's in the papers and online from media outlets and believe, well, this must be the gospel. And you guys hold them accountable, you report out to them, and keep them in the loop. And that all goes to an overall greater transparency than, you know, than it's been in the past. And I think that's important. People just need to realize that we work hard to try to let people out there know what we're doing and how we're doing it. Interestingly enough, you can see the level of interest. There's nobody here from the public. So anyway, commendable job. Thank you for all you do.
Commissioner McDowell.
I do have a question. When I was looking at the HTE on page 39, I noticed that this year we had professional services for $152,000. And this year, it's been recommended of $22,000. I'm wondering, why are we reducing it so much? And...
I believe that is the $100,000 for the website redesign project from the American Rescue Plan funds. So those are being, that project will be completed this fiscal year.
Thank you. And where in here is our quarterly North Report that goes out to the community?
So that is under Professional Services. I think it's in 5400. Maybe? Maybe not? Oh, it's somewhere here. I wouldn't say it's 20,000. No, it's in 3105, Annual Communications Mailing.
It says annual, though. So I wasn't too sure what happened, and that's what prompted me to ask the question? Why are we doing it annually now?
We had a significant cost increase from the printing company with the addition of new addresses and the increased printing costs. It was really cost prohibitive for us to produce that. We did get interrupted by the hurricane, and we did a special edition after the hurricane of a print newsletter that we mailed home to every residence in the city. But the cost went up tremendously. I do not have the breakdown, but it was something like $16,000 to mail one issue. It was much more than we had budgeted. So we're looking at repackaging that. We've taken a pause. We are going to do a print mailer, but it may be less frequency, and it may direct people to the online resources. We are developing an online newsletter so that we would do a print mailer that would have a QR code that would direct people to how they could find that easily, find that information. And we can actually increase the frequency with a monthly newsletter through email as that is a, you know, more popular way that people are receiving news and information. But we still do recognize the value of printing, print products, and reaching people that way. So we would still continue with a print product that would direct people to where they can find more information.
And I understand what you're saying. And if we're going to do an annual one, it's so ironic that I received this when I was up at the Nominating Committee this past week. The city of Oldsmar does an annual one, too. And it's quite, quite in-depth, the different things that they talk about, and the different things that they discuss in here. It's not just focused on city day-to-day minutia, but it talks about things that are coming up in the year. It talks about major projects and where they are in it. And I would love to be able to share this with you, to take a look at it, because it also talks about things that Parks does when our budget workshops are. It's kind of like a year program. That way, then, it's tangible, people can hang on to it, people can use it and refer to it, pass it on to somebody else. So I would be more than happy to share it with you if you're interested.
Sure.
Regarding the Citizens Academy, thank you. Thank you. It's taken me seven years to hear Citizens Academy, and I am so grateful that this is being done because it is vitally important. I recognize how important it is. That's why I've been doing the Northport Government New Class for the past seven years because the city didn't want to do anything. So I am very grateful. I look forward to seeing what that's going to look like. I will be doing that first one, whether I hope to be still elected, to be able to see what you guys are doing, or I will be on that list first as a citizen if it doesn't get done in time. But thank you very much for picking that ball up because I've only got a year and a half to keep on trying to teach the residents. So thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to hosting you.
I'm going to continue for the next year and a half, and then it's all I'm going to be on you.
Vice Mayor. Yes, I have one question to start with. So there's a total of three outreach coordinators? Is that correct?
So currently, those are current titles. We had, you may be familiar, we had positions that were titled Community Outreach Coordinator, but they were really do-it-all communications staff members who were embedded with specific departments. As we work through that transfer, since those positions were currently funded with enterprise funds, and those are being moved over to communications in the next fiscal year budget, we are changing some of the job titles and the responsibilities of those individuals, and they're filling new roles that are more specialized.
Okay.
So you'll see in the next year that they have different titles. That's where the confusion comes in with Community Outreach Coordinator. The Community Engagement Coordinator is the one new position that we are asking for that would focus on that role specifically citywide.
Right.
While, where the others are specialized in social media, you know, design, different areas of specialty.
Okay. And yes, that was, goes into my next thing about the, I like the word engagement being in that description there, and that is the only real new one, correct?
Correct.
Right. And then also to, again, compliment you on what you do and just even how you explain that, you definitely are the person who are communications position. I love your press releases. They're so well-thought-out and coincide and eliminate, you know, the possibility of rumors or, you know, and people not really understanding things. I just, I think that's great. And also, it's helpful for, I can just speak for me, for me to know what's going on. So when people call me and say, I don't know. So I look at that press release, and it's right there. Yeah, that quarterly thing, I knew that was going to become really expensive, but the once a year, as Commissioner McDowell said, it would be, it would be great for people just to know in advance what your, what the calendar is, so, or at least when this comes up. Maybe something like, think about postcards because they're cheaper to mail, just to direct people to the website. And then also that North Report. I never fail to give that out to people when they have these little minute issues. And I said, you know, do you know about the North Report? And they don't. And that's just so simple. Then that takes it off our plate, and they actually do get action very quickly by following And I think that is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This is one of my favorite topics, given my background. And I just have to acknowledge the incredible challenge in trying to communicate consistently and effectively, particularly with our residents. But I'm equally concerned about external audiences as well. And I have one question before I want to go into comments, and that is around branding. Again, one of my favorite topics. And so branding certainly has a look and feel element. I'd certainly hope that at least all of our external literature, when you line it up, it all looks like it's coming from the city. But it's also a consistency of message. And I'd like us to think a little bit more about how we all articulate the city. I was having a conversation earlier this week with a Realtor who was sharing with me the challenge he has in articulating the benefits of living in Northport when they can move down the street and live more cheaply or more cost-effectively in Charlotte County. And of course, I can always say something, but I think it's always helpful if we're all singing from the same hymnal because repetition tends to stick. So that was a long introduction to saying, what are your thoughts? What are you doing today on branding? And how do you see us moving forward as a city?
Thank you for the comment and question. It is an area of consideration for us. As you may know, a full-scale branding or rebranding of an organization or a city can be very expensive. And I know there was one done many years ago, and we still have the information, and we use a lot of that branding today. Our team has done what we would consider a temporary rebranding or a reconsideration of our current branding. So you may have started to see it with some of our materials that we're producing, where we took that branding book and the different color schemes that we had previously, and we tried to narrow that down a little bit, made it a little more accessible for our team to use, whereas there aren't so many color schemes, so many different logo uses out there. We've done that exercise that you kind of mentioned, where we put all the materials out that the city has produced and took a look at, and different departments are doing things differently and saying things differently.
Yeah.
It is something that we're focused on. Again, looking at the cost, we're trying to find cost savings in ways that we can do it without the amount of expense and the amount of interaction and engagement that you want to have for the community to feel like they have a part in it, but also looking at how we can, you know, just all those areas that branding touches.
Yeah.
From the signage to the literature, to the brand, you know, slogans that we use and the words that we use.
Right.
It is an area of focus for us, but we're trying to figure out a pathway to do that in a way that's cost-effective and utilizes the talents of our team that we have as well.
Right. Right. And something that we used in the companies I've worked for for the past is we would sort of have a corporate branding guide, and there'd be the color palette and what fonts were useful, and then some messaging. So a lot of the work is heavy lifting from a personnel point of view, but not really expensive. I wouldn't see us redoing all of our literature, but as things come up for reprinting, have them go to this sort of consistent look and feel. But enough said. Your push campaigns, I think I've mentioned this in other venues. Thank you so much for that. They're very valuable. I also want to recognize, I don't know if it's widely known, but Jason's organization has integrated with WKDW so that the city can push information out to the community when there are emergency situations. And I really want to give you guys a lot of credit for doing that kind of work. I think one of the things we learned post-Ian is that there was an extended period of time when none of us could access good and reliable information. And so I see your growing relationship with WKDW as a step in the right direction. I like the idea of consolidation. There's a concept of expertise centers. When you get people of a certain function together in one place, they share best practices and all of that kind of thing. And I, you know, high tide lifts all boats, so I'm very appreciative of that. I am so distressed by the lack of quality in the reporting of our media partners. It's appalling, actually. And I think some of it is relationships. So I would ask you to consider, are there some things we can do to bring those folks here? Maybe have some media relations events, a little tour? You know, people don't come to Northport. And I've gotten feedback when electeds in other areas have come here for meetings, and what a beautiful campus we have. And a lot of other communities don't have this kind of a setup for their city buildings. So I would just ask you to, to brainstorm and get creative on what we can do to develop stronger relationships with our print media and our broadcast media, radio, and, and TV. And if that means events and bringing them in and schmoozing them, whatever we have to do, give, give them an opportunity to hear from our enormously talented departmental directors. So, and again, it's sort of part of that branding. People who have been engaging with us for a long time have a concept in their head of what we were like 10 and 15 years ago, and, and we're not that city anymore. So I'd just ask you to maybe get creative in that realm as well. Okay, that's it for me.
Absolutely, go ahead. I'm trying to think. I didn't bring my notes with me. Didn't you just win an award in the Communications Department? Win something from a big?
We did. We, from the Florida Municipal Communicators Association, which is the statewide organization. We achieved the Certificate of Excellence, which is essentially our accreditation for our field.
Right.
So we're very proud of that. It was a great team accomplishment.
Yeah, yes, I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
You guys do a great job.
In a national award for emergency response on social media.
Awesome.
During the hurricane.
But Tampa came in first due to their hurricane experience.
Correct. Correct. But we're not bitter about that.
I would just point out that Tampa is a very strong media market with a lot of companies spending a lot of money in advertising. I'm not naive. I know what really floats that boat. But we need to sort of figure out how we, how we help there. So I don't see any more comments. Any public comment on this topic? Okay, are you looking for any guidance or direction from us today?
No, ma'am.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome work.
Thank you for your support.
Kudos to you and your team. Okay, I think we're still good. Moving on to item 23-0996, City Clerk's Department. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this is the Charter Officer of Minor Review for the City Clerk's Department. As we pull it up, you will notice and see at some point that they are not asking for any, there we go. They are not asking for any new authorized positions, which is good on their department. What I would say is that of the volume of work that they do, and we know that our office impacts what they do, they are probably one of the most productive, but the most silent departments that you're ever going to find. Not silently leadership, but just due to the role. But they are, they are very powerful but quiet, and they are very functional within their means. The good governance pillar is what dictates them as they relate right back to us and how we support you and how they support you as the administrative arm of the city's commission. When you look at their performance measures, timeliness, and reporting, the minutes and the attention to detail are what drives their success. And they are also very active in the advisory boards and the community outreach of how that impacts the information that we get out, the information that gets to you, and how we can, of course, always be better. They do do a lot of tracking and scheduling of requests, especially for the commission, but they also do a lot of making sure that we're in compliance as it relates to how we post-advertise ourselves and communicate to the public. Again, I can't say it enough, calm and silent, and I won't belabor the point, but, and you can see their budget summary. I would say that Madam City Clerk Faust is one of the more fiscally responsible people I think I probably ever have met. We are, we are providing them with, for an example, for some new carpet in their office because they're one of the offices that have had it for quite some time, and it really needs to be changed. So we are happy to service them and work with them in any way we can to make sure that their experience in this building is fine as well. But they are, they are very, very independent and well-maintained. They do not have any new budget proposals to discuss. And unless the Madam Clerk has anything else to add to that, I will stop right there.
I do not have anything else to add.
Okay. I'm opening the floor up to any questions or comments. Commissioner McDowell.
Yes, ma'am. I only have one, and it's just an observation based on a response to a question I had during my one-on-one. The legal ads are now going to be taken care of through neighborhood, I'm sorry, through development services. And I was wondering if your department then is going to cut that cost out of your budget?
Not this year. We're going to let it go for a year and then see what the difference is. And then next year, when the adjustments is needed.
Thank you very much for that point.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other lights on. Well done, team, to continue to operate with no real changes in your cost structure. Takes a lot of good planning and process control. So good for you. Before we move on, any public comment on this? Okay. We're at almost 11:00. We're going to be taking a lunch break right about 12:00. Does anyone have the need for a quick break right now? Or do you want to plow on through? Okay, let's take a 10-minute break and, and come back at, oh, what would that be? You know, 11:06 or something.
This has been another video of Ask the Arborist. If you have any questions, please visit the city website at cityofnorthport.com.
If you're happy and you know it, flap your wings. If you're happy and you know it, flap your wings. If you're happy and you know it, you really ought to show it. If you're happy and you know it, flap your wings.
When you're following behind large trucks, you want to make sure that you're following at a safe distance. And if you don't know that safe distance, just remember if they, if you can't see their mirrors, they can't see you.
We stop at about 1,000 houses a day. In order for us to complete that, you know, and, and be safe, you know, we try not to rush in between the houses. It takes us a little time. We're not trying to slow you down. We're just trying to get things up in an orderly fashion. How our trucks work, we have two different types of trucks that pick up residential garbage and recycle. We have one that's a side loader, and we have one that's a front loader. When that bucket comes out of the top of the truck and is positioned to pick up cans up front, you have probably eight, nine feet in front of you that the people behind you passing may not know about.
On a large truck, construction vehicles, et cetera, there's a lot of flashing lights. So just make sure their brake lights, you know, you're paying attention to their brake lights and their blinkers so you know what they're intending to do. So you want to make sure that you're not on a double yellow line or a curve, and you have good visibility for oncoming traffic so you can pass safely.
If you're too close and you go to pass, you never know what's around the corner.
When coming up to an intersection behind a large vehicle, realize that you can't pass within 100 foot of an intersection. Go through that intersection safely, following at a safe distance. And then once your lines allow you to pass, do so safely when there's not oncoming traffic.
Safety first. Don't risk your life to get somewhere soon. All right, you're going to hurt yourself or somebody else. Let's just keep it safe.
Hello, I'm David, and today we're doing another episode of Ask the Arborist. We've had a lot of questions come in about gopher tortoises in the city of Northport. We certainly have a lot of them. And today, we're going to answer some of those questions that have been coming in. The first one is, what happens when there's a gopher tortoise on a vacant lot and a builder puts in a land clearing permit and wants to build or develop that lot? Well, when they submit a land clearing permit, myself or George Murphy, the other arborists, we go out to the land, and we walk the lot for gopher tortoise burrows. This is what they look like. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species, and up to 300, 350 different animals depend on this burrow. So the state or the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has protected the animal and its burrows. So we do our very best to make sure that these do not get disturbed. By doing so, we walk vacant lots when land clear permits get issued to ensure that there are not any burrows. If there are burrows or gopher tortoises on that lot, we do not issue a land clear permit. What we do instead is contact the builder and let them know that they have.
Resuming our budget workshop meeting. It is 11:07. It is 11:07, and we are resuming our budget workshop. So I think we left off at 23-0997. The City Commission Department. Uh-oh, City Manager, this is your item.
Yes, ma'am. We trimmed a lot. The City Commission recommended budget for 2024. You're going to notice it's very similar to the one from 2023. As you look at the actual bar chart that shows you the operating and personnel expenses, not a lot has changed there overall. There are no budget proposals for this particular division as well. I would like to just highlight a lot of what has happened in this past year that the commission has gone through. We talk about what are the response that you guys had to deal with with the city as far as the COVID-19 response and the hurricane response. You know, we've had some cybersecurity challenges as well. So there's a lot that you guys have had to deal with as you go through your experiences. And I know that that's not represented on some of these slides, but, you know, it is, it has been a, a interesting year and a half since I've been here. But the pleasure of working and getting through a lot of those with you all and communicating and just sort of finding the right way, I can't say enough about. So thank you for your insight.
Okay, any questions, comments, public comments? City Clerk?
No, ma'am.
Okay, whoa, whipping right through. Let's move on to 23-0999 IT.
City Attorney.
Oh, yeah.
City Attorney, did you miss that?
Oh, I am so sorry. City Attorney, 23-0998.
Absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. So under the guidance and leadership of Board Certified City Attorney Slaton, we definitely want to give her a great acknowledgement for the team she has put together and the work that they do. As we talk about what happened during Hurricane Ian, they were in lockstep, if not in front of the city manager's office on how we needed to make sure we prepared ourselves, not only from a documentation standpoint, but as it says, 390 hours of employee time dedicated to Hurricane Ian. Even though losing connectivity with the city for about 24 hours, they continued to work and worked remotely through mid-October. Legal items and procurement requests and contracts drafted, FEMA requirements. When we talk about the success of FEMA, the city's attorney's office was right there and shared just as much credit as anyone else. The ability for Ms. Slaton and her team to work with our team cannot be stated enough. She guides us in every way and every day, and we're grateful. And their office continues to help us as we get through emergency procurements. And you've seen that even recently as we talk about the ratifications of Hurricane. the ratifications of Hurricane Ian that are still coming up. We know that we're not done with them, but we also know that if they're not processed the right way, that we will have challenges, more challenges, unnecessary challenges at some later point in time. There are no authorized positions that are being requested right now. You might remember that you added a mid-year request of hers to increase for an attorney, which was very well appreciated. And again, she is, she and her team are no different. They are affected by the volume of the growth of the city. They are a significant team member and them increasing their capacity as well as the depth and breadth of their knowledge is something that the city benefits from on a daily basis, but may not always be stated. So again, as a charter officer, I know I'm speaking about one of my peer group, but I'm very proud to say that I work with her on a daily basis and their team, even as evidenced by the ones who are here today with Attorney Roberts and Deputy City Attorney Golan. We think that we got a lot done and we're grateful for their continued success of the city. This budget chart shows that they are just growing and the growth of their department only relates in more impact and more ability for the city to be successful. And they have no budget proposals as well. So I'll stop right there.
Okay, the floor is open to the commission. Commissioner Stokes.
Just a very brief comment. You know, in my short-term on this commission, I have greatly appreciated being able to, you know, talk to and work with the city attorney's office. I mean, you folks do a great job, in my opinion, keeping us out of trouble, giving us proper guidance. And it is to be commended. You got a great staff, so thank you for all you do.
And I just want to mention, thank you for the templates. Having some consistency in our boilerplates and that kind of thing goes a long way to preventing errors and keeping us out of troubles. So I'm big on process and efficiency and so I see it in that. Thank you. Not seeing any other lights on, city clerk? Any public comment? Okay, thank you. Then we will move on to 23-0999 IT. Another one of my favorite topics.
Absolutely.
They're all my favorite topics. There are just a couple that-
Who doesn't love a good IT department? I agree. So thank you, Madam Mayor. So starting with the IT department and under the leadership of Mr. Ryan, you know, the impact of Hurricane Ian, as you can imagine, had a huge result on how we communicate and how we get information that's flowing. And you know, the cellular communications through the city were diminished due to the power loss. If we remember, it was multiple days of without having power and working with our friends in FP and L. And they did their best to actually get us back up and running. Those were some very tough times. As we remember back to how we went through them, the internet connectivity and, you know, the loss of the city generator. I mean, these are, these are the things that, you know, this department was directly impacted by. They, there, there is no other recourse other than needing IT. There's no substitution for it. You know, we live in an age and a community where it's so important for us to have that. And when you don't have it, it takes partnerships, it takes collaborations, it takes the emergency operations group, who was led by Mr. Mike Ryan, in order to help us get through some of these challenging times. I'll, I'll stop right there and see if Mr. Ryan wants to add a little bit about the hurricane impact of Ian on his department, but we're grateful that he was able to get through. That was in October and not even mentioning some of the other stuff that he went through earlier in the year. His department is very, very important to the success of how we communicate and get our business done as a city.
Eric Ryan, IT manager. I would like to add the fire department is currently working on a new generator, which will drastically change the situation for us in future years. We also were able to partner with Verizon, who got equipment out to us quickly. In the future, they have mentioned that they would be able to pre-position some equipment if needed. As you can see, some of our requests would allow for us not to rely as heavily on an outside partner as ourselves. So if approved, we would be able to do some of the very things that they would come in and do for us.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll keep going here and see if there's any questions in the group. But one of the positions that we did identify for a request for this year does fall within our IT department. And it is a position of financial systems analyst. And the need for this position is for the data and recording needs of our finance department. There are, again, when we talk about a decentralized model, there's various IT staff in other departments. But again, the dotted line and the connection back to Mr. Ryan cannot be understated, but our finance team does need their own person in order to make sure that we are using, leveraging and taking advantage of technology as much as possible. We have some old and outdated processes and I applaud finance for raising their hand and saying, hey, we can no longer do this. They, if I remember correctly, they asked for it last year. We tried to do a workaround that probably did not go as well as we would have liked, but that's okay. Because again, you know, you can only ask for so much in a given year, but we feel like that the need and the request for this position in this year is something that we cannot live without. But we think that you will see the benefit and the quality and the quantity of how we continue doing our data services through our financial lens of the finance department, which is very, very important. They are all in the good governance pillar and providing advanced municipal services to internal and external customers, which of course is always a challenge. When you look at the uptime being above 98%, if we're not online, you're not able to actually provide those services. So they do a great job of making sure they keep us online. And again, I think it's one of those services and abilities that you sort of take for granted until it's not working. And then you're like, okay, well, wait a minute. And you don't realize the other 98% of the time where it is working and how they are taking care of different service orders and making sure that we're safe from a phishing standpoint and the mail and making sure that the training is done and you get the people who fail those tests. We do have people who fail those phishing tests quite frequently. Some of them may be, may not be at this table, but we make sure that when they do fail, that we get them the training that they need and make sure that we don't have repeat offenders. As you see the budget summary, you can see it continues to grow, but only slightly. And I don't think there's anything there that you have not given the IT department that we sort of met with you and told you that we needed in order to make sure that we are ahead of the curve, ensuring that the challenges we've had in the past do not repeat themselves. So under their budget proposals, the financial analyst, which I mentioned, is number one on this list, replacement computers. You always have to make sure that through the lifecycle of our technology, that we have the funding there to stay on top of it. Technology changes on a daily basis, but our ability to make sure that we don't sort of prematurely replace our hardware is significant. I know that we go through that and we take very big pride in making sure that we follow the path of replacement without sort of jumping the line, so to speak. And you'll also see that, you know, the Cradle Point and Starlink and Hotspot Equipment Services, this will provide more emergency operations, center and call center services during times of emergency. Again, similar to communications, we want to be ready. We have a very proactive leader in this department. And I know he's been here for several years and I've heard nothing but great things about how his approach to leadership and change in leadership has put this division and department on a pathway for nothing but success. When you look at some of these other budget proposals, these are ones that we believe are necessary in order to maintain the quality that you enjoy and benefit. I'll just point your eye to the last one of the SIM monitor subscription, which adds 24 by 7 cybersecurity monitoring to the securities network. I think it speaks for itself, but again, just want to make sure that we're all aware that it is a significant area of importance of our city, not only for the services he provides, but the services he protects. If you don't have that protection in mind, bad things can happen. This is one where you'll see that was not recommended was where the access points. And again, as you see the budget proposals that were not recommended, we want to point out that the, the promise to you from our team is that we are going to monitor this and see if, how and when we can get some of these things done based on the budget you approve, but knowing that we're not going to ask for any more new improvements right now. And I will stop right there and see if you have any more questions about our IT department.
Well, I see a lot of lights on. So Commissioner Amrich.
Yeah, my main concern is we don't want to fall back into the situation that we had last year with security and everything like that. I want to make sure that you are rock solid on the security issues and have everything that you need going forward. I know we've had discussions and one-on-ones on what you needed back then, but do you need any more now? Because we can always take it out of Chief Garrison's budget. I just want to make sure he's awake back there. But seriously though, I want to make sure that we are as secure as we possibly can be because I don't, I don't want to go and revisit that personally.
Right. We don't either. We believe we are where we need to be. We've a couple of requests in this current that would tighten it up.
And I don't need specifics. I just want to make sure that, you know, you're okay.
We're good.
Okay, thank you very much.
As tools change and as the environment changes, I think I've mentioned it to each of you before, we may be back and we may change our approach during the year. But as of now, this is what we feel would allow us to be most successful.
And as times change and technology changes, feel free to bring it to this commission or our input because I think it's pretty much needed. So, and I think you would probably have the board's support, so.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes, thank you for all you do. I don't think it's any big secret that I am technology challenged and they're well aware of that. For when I forget to change my password and all kinds of things. But just thank you for all you do and anything in here that you need, it's beyond me. So I'm glad that you're keeping up the things. I appreciate Commissioner Amrich's question about security because that really is, is really important. And I know that it's in good hands for your department. So thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Stokes.
Yes. IT very often is kind of overlooked or underappreciated, yet it, till something goes wrong and then everybody goes, what? Whose fault is this? And you know, you guys do, you backstop all the departments and you help them to facilitate their responsibilities to process reports, to help get things out on time. Technology drives things and technology continues to change. So it's an ongoing cost for us, an expense. It should be appreciated and we need to continue to keep at the forefront. So we appreciate all you do and, you know, keep up the good work.
Commissioner McDowell.
So I am grateful for everything your department does. I too am technology challenged and your department is just so accommodating and so kind when I have stupid little things that I did wrong or didn't know I did. So thank you very much to you and your entire department. I do have a couple of questions about the budget. The first one is the financial systems analyst. And maybe Commissioner Amrich can help me remember this, but I, I remember a few years ago when we were giving the finance department the tools, software tools to be able to implement some new software programming in their department. And we said we also wanted somebody to help oversee it. And I think it was like to help write the program because it was so specialized. And we want kind of like a project manager, an assistant to them. And that, when I'm reading this, it's kind of what jogged my memory. I'm like, we've done this before and we've had that conversation. Was something done in finance from a few years ago? Do you remember this, Pete?
I remember the discussion, but I don't think we ever implemented it. I don't remember doing it. I know we, I remember talking about software. I remember talking about personnel, like you said, the project manager. But I don't think it got put in place. I think it got cut at the last minute.
Last year, we put in place a Laserfish expert for specific software development of that program. And currently they're working to automate purchasing process. There are other items that they will automate after purchasing. So there are a couple more finance processes that they will automate, like from a workflow perspective and a document perspective to get it off of the paper that we all pass around, move it to an electronic format, you know, much quicker, much more efficient. You know, the list is long, so that person will be working additionally on some HR processes. They will do some stuff for the clerks. They will do some stuff for NDS specifically to Laserfish. But from a project management standpoint, we, IT have not implemented anything direct for finance.
Right.
So why is this in IT when it's directly benefiting finance? It's not a citywide-
The role is far more technical than an average, let's say, analyst from a, from a finance or accounting perspective. So much more development, you know, backend type SQL queries from a, I need a, an individual who knows how to program and write code to be able to modify the solutions they're looking for, some of the things we're intending to implement from them. The ERP system is fairly old. And to keep us in line with competition from a, what we need to show from a transparency standpoint, what finance needs to be able to do to accomplish the amount of work that they have, we need dedicated staff for that.
So once these programs are implemented, what happens to this position?
I don't believe that it's a one and done type. It's a, it's an evolution. You know, we spoke about the process improvement previously. We reevaluate things. As the city grows, there's more need for technical expertise in their specialized area. So we're attempting to bring on somebody that's got very specialized IT knowledge and background and also that knows the finance world.
My other question is budget proposal 2603, Wi-Fi access points. Can you kind of give me an idea where these access points might be? I mean, are they in buildings? Are they outside at parks where?
There's one right there.
Okay. So are they, are the majority of them-
They're all throughout buildings.
All, all the different places?
Yes.
Inside and outside?
Do we have any outside?
Okay. So I understand that the budget is only so big, but there's a lot of things in here. I believe this needs to be a priority and in the budget, not, hey, if we get money, we're going to put it in the budget. Because this is really important to be able to do the jobs that everybody does in City Hall and in various locations. So for me, this should be funded and then find something else to unfund. It's $27,000 on a huge budget. So I'm just sharing that. I don't know if that's something we need to get a consensus on, but if the equipment's 10 years old, if anything this position has taught me is how outdated technology becomes after you get something new and it's outdated. It's worse than buying a new car. It loses its value. Technology loses its luster because things change so quickly. 10 years for Wi-Fi? I sometimes wonder if that's part of my frustrations when I'm in here going, why isn't this loading on? Now I kind of understand. So I just really would like to see this become funded. Let the city manager find something else to unfund that's $27,000. That's where I'm going.
Commissioner, I, I agree with you. If you would like to throw out a consensus, I would certainly entertain it.
I would like to see about getting a consensus to fund budget 2603, giving city manager authorization to unfund something else that he sees fit.
Commissioner Stokes.
I'd support that, yeah.
I'm all in, Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Commissioner Amrich.
Yes, city manager, get out your budget stretcher.
Great. Thank you for that, Commissioner. I only have one other comment and that is we did not have to pay-
is, we did not have to pay any ransom for data loss. I just think, I'm still amazed by that, so, thank you.
Qualified. There was not data loss. There was a time we were unable to work, but we did not lose data.
Correct, correct. And we didn't pay anything to get anything back, so, that's good. You earned your salary with that. Okay, I don't see any other lights on. Do we have public comment on this? Okay, let's move on to the non-departmental Budget 23-1004.
Right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Non-departmental should be pretty quick. As you may remember, this is where you initiated last year the $150,000 of the city manager's contingency account, and this is also where your contingency account lives as well. I will let you know just from what we spent on our side of that contingency conversation was temporary staffing that we needed for the website improvement process. We had not had it identified. We pulled it out of there. That was a $64,000 expense that we didn't see. Was, as you can tell, that was a little decent-sized chunk, so it came in handy. So, we appreciate you allowing that for our consideration. And to be honest, based on the conversation that you just had, without having to go back and scrub some of the other numbers on the consensus that was just adopted, I'd probably remove it from here and say, "You know what? Well, let us take the impact from that. He's in our department, and why not take 25 from there, and then we'll sort of make that work out," with sort of having to put more hardship on the team, just only because we have cut a lot of deep from them. So, I'm trying to keep them where they are, but I do appreciate the need for the item to be added. So, we will take care of that and make sure. But I think that that might be a good place for us to find it. There are no budget proposals for this year in this particular department, so it will carry on. But I'm happy to answer any questions about it before we go to Parks and Rec.
Thank you, City Manager. The floor is open. I'm not seeing any lights on. Do we have any public comment on this, City Clerk?
Yeah.
Then let's move on to Parks and Rec, Item 23-1000.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can hear Director Funheller walking behind me.
And her entourage.
There's a bunch of staff. She's not just her.
She's a team. No, let's be clear. She doesn't travel anywhere along. Hey, good to see you. So, when we talk about the impact of Hurricane Ian, you know, based on the volume of parks and the global responsibility from the director and her team, we could be talking about this all day, truly, if we wanted to. But what I would like to say and point out is that one of the more vocal things that has been impacted by Hurricane Ian, of course, is Warm Mineral Springs. And to get it open and to get it open as soon as possible was a challenge based on reasons previously stated, and we all remember those. But the impact on the community was significant, and getting it open in early April was a success. They continue to sort of deal with Warm Mineral Springs as we continue to go through that process cycle. But the amenities that our public parks use and the access and the Aquatic Center and some of the other operations buildings, which I mentioned earlier with the $600,000 that you approved, all tie back into this particular department. I'm going to pause there and see if she wants to add anything about the Hurricane Ian impact as we go into some of her other numbers. But Director Funheller, if you want to...
Good morning, everyone. The only thing I would add is just to highlight that we have had closure of facility spaces and ongoing reservations and programming that's been impacted. The biggest ones have been our gym at the Morgan Center, not having that. That's a huge impact for us. And also the Scout House, which is still under repair. Outside of that, a lot of the amenities have been damaged and have not been brought online as yet. But we are progressing and going as fast as we can to get those back.
May I ask a quick question? The gym of the Morgan Center, when do you expect that? What's the timeline there?
It probably is not going to be until September.
We're talking about when students come back to school. There will still be a delay in getting that particular venue up and running as well as it should, which is, it's been a long time.
There's a coordination that needs to happen with the air conditioning unit, which was also damaged before we can put that flooring in.
Okay. As we transition through some of the other slides before we get some feedback, there is also one position within this particular department. It is a groundskeeper two that has been requested as a new position. When we look at the need and the actual, what will be provided by the groundskeeper, to what I will say on that is, the impact of this, we're talking about the new disc golf course, the Maya-Acahachi Creek Greenway Trail, as well as Mooringham McKibben, the Pine Park, and the Brea Parks, which are currently outsourced. We're talking about adding a personnel that can allow us to have better control and management of those areas and some of those new activities. We always try to make sure that when you add new activities, is there an ability of economies of scale so that we can take care of it with our existing staff? But when we can't, we raise our hand. And we believe that this is one of those situations where the benefits greatly outweigh the challenges of trying to maintain those areas in addition to everything that the department has going on otherwise. When we talk about the rank priorities, they definitely fall into our quality of life and what they provide and the availability of programs and activities that will support the health and happiness of our community. It's important. They are always looking at the resources and cost savings, and you may have had questions in the past or questions in the present about how do we outsource and how do we do that so that it makes the most sense as we continue to work through not only our city partners, but again, nonprofit and community partners. They are on the front line of making sure those relationships are successful and the special events and the different programs that we have to offer. You might even remember from yesterday where you approved the special events budget to be increased by $3,000. There is a high volume of people who want to provide special events in our city, and I believe there's a great correlation with the staffing member of the special events coordinator who came on board last year and the connection between that success as well, because he's been out there working with them, making sure that the diversity of activities that we have are covered and the needs are being met by our citizen population. When you look at some of their performance measures, we want to make sure people are overall satisfied and keep a high-level grade there of making sure they're content. The achieve anything, memberships in comparison, we want to make sure that that's always increasing throughout the city. And we also want to make sure that as we generate an overall click-through rate of at least 4% from our marketing campaigns. There's a lot that goes into the marketing of this particular department because the volume is there. We talk about the 28-plus parks and the different activities. This department has gone through a lot since the hurricane, and there was a time there that I was worried about our fearless leader's mental health. I'll just go out and say that. But she performed very well, and she performed very well because she's surrounded by a talented team. They had some reshuffling of their leadership in the last few months, and I would like to say to them all that they've sort of stepped up in a way that has been, without missing a beat. And they continuously win awards, and they know that, and we know that. But you really need to stop at some point and say thank you for everything that they do, because it is a lot. And you look at an apartment that is being led by a quality leader and then having the succession planning and people in place to step up into those positions, you don't just find that everywhere, every day. So, let's please acknowledge that. And we could go through their performance measures for quite some time, but I would again encourage us all to make sure that we look at our dashboard, make sure that we appreciate the volume of what they do and how they do it, knowing that they are a call center and they are a significant call center. I don't want to pretend like they are not, but I think what we get in return for the value to this city is tremendous. When we look at the budget proposals for this particular department, replacement vehicles was something important. I think that we talked to Fleet. We went back and we scrubbed the numbers again to make sure that, "Hey, look, are we doing everything we can with the existing inventory before we go out?" And our Fleet Manager politely reminded me that some of these items should have been replaced well before now. So, we had to keep it moving to make sure that we don't have inventory that fails us as we take care of our various sites in the city. The staffing for Warm Mineral Springs, this is what we are doing as the bridge in between the conversation of the P3 partnership, the conversation with the community, where do we go from the survey results. Much more acknowledgement to Director Funheller, as well as Assistant Director Public Works Tricia Wisner, who are, I would say, they're hands-on on Warm Mineral Springs every single day, whether it's from an operational standpoint, whether it's from a process standpoint. Legal has been involved from the P3 standpoint. There is a lot of different people. Finance has been involved on that same team. There's so many people in that room that we meet with, talking about how do we get this and how do we get it done right? And it's a lot. And knowing that that Warm Mineral Springs conversation is coming back before you on July the 10th, that's going to be a very, very heavy day of conversation, but it's necessary. And we're going to bring new information. We're going to bring a survey consultant to you to talk about those results. We're going to talk also with the developer on what low intensity means in their eyes. We'll have our team, Director Ray from our Development Services Department, what does low intensity mean in our eyes, and hopefully we'll give you some better guidance as we continue to look for your decision-making on that particular venue. The Aquatic Center, I know that it had a record-breaking spring break, which was phenomenal. It continues to go well. It continues to draw a lot of crowd and diversity of people who appreciate it in this community. I know that we're asking for a budget proposal of repairs right then and there. And as we mentioned, and I think it was Assistant City Manager Yarborough who said that, you know, this was one of those initial repairs that was a challenge when the park first began, and now we're finally addressing it. And we know that as we continue to have the volume of people that we want there, that there will be improvements that are needed to be made. But that gym in our city, we have to make sure that we actually keep it and take care of it. I spoke about the parks maintenance groundkeeper, as well as some of the vehicles needed for replacement. But please be aware that these are not new or replacement vehicles that are on the early side of their life. They are on the later side, and we believe that as we've constructed the budget and the other sources to pull from those, that we found a good way to make it work and give the director what she needs. And even though it's not on this particular slide, I'll ask the director if she has anything that she needs to add. When I talked to you about things that were on the cutting room floor, some of those were hers. And, you know, this is what I would classify globally as an exercise of a leap of faith. We know that they still need these things. We have to make sure that they get them, but it's how we get them is what we're changing this year. And we just want to be a little bit more hands-on, have a little bit more oversight, and still make sure that she has what she needs so that you as a commission, the citizens as a whole, don't see any sort of, see any sort of shortfall in that calculation. The result should be better money management. And I'll stop right there until the director wants to add any of that brilliant speech.
I have faith.
Thank you. Thank you.
I don't have anything additional.
Okay, then if staff is done, I am opening up the floor. Commissioner Stokes.
Yes. Well, first to commend Parks and Recs for the quality of life that you do offer our citizens. I mean, we have a lot of parks and a lot of recreation areas, and you guys do tremendous job. We inherited a bunch from the county. You guys absorbed them in. So, kudos for all your hard work. And I think the community at large appreciates all that we offer them. Two areas that, you know, I do have a little, some comments on, the Aquatic Center. You know, the Aquatic Center and Mineral Springs, I see as a little bit unique from the other Parks and Rec areas, and because they are more business-oriented. And, for what it's worth, I would love to see some more focus on promoting revenue-producing ideas at the Aquatic Center. I know it's tough to do, but when I sit on the county tourism board and have had dialogue with some of my peers in other cities and the county, and they think our Aquatic Center is fantastic, and there might be some room for community and engagement there, the ability to bring more meats, to promote that venue for things beyond our city, which might help generate some revenue. And a little bit more of that entrepreneurial spirit there, because I think the Aquatic Center and Mineral Springs are different than ball fields and the community centers. So, enough said on that. I've shared some of those thoughts to you guys before. On Mineral Springs, I know we're in a transitional period. I think, and I've said it before, the budget page on this is, I think, a little skinny for me. I would very much appreciate really seeing what it really costs to operate this thing. We're going to have to face making some tough decisions on, especially in light of community input, on how we proceed. And I think it's real important. I don't think we as a commission, and I'm sure the community at large, has no clue how outrageously financially burdensome maintaining 80 acres is going to be if this city decides to simply keep and operate the 80 acres of Mineral Springs. I think it's important to be able to see a better picture of what that's going to look like over the next 12 months. And maybe it's not germane to just approving a budget line item here for the springs, but it is really important to see. And it's timely because we're coming up against another meeting on this subject. And people don't realize how incredibly expensive it's going to be on an ongoing basis to maintain this without some sort of a collaboration. So...
As I respond, before you respond, would you mind switching seats, Phil? Actually, switch seats, just going back to your point, which we've had this conversation. The way that we track expenses for Warm Mineral Springs itself is very typical in a sense to how we track a lot of it. The drill-down detail of, "Okay, I want to see exactly what goes into there." When you look at the Aquatic Center in our budget book, it's very detailed. When you look at the springs, it is not. And we do have some of that information that exists, but we need to put it together, and we promise that we will, as you go through your decision-making process. So, you can say, "Tell me exactly, where's the mowing? Tell me exactly where are the other things?" Because some of that, as we track our expenses, are not sort of broken out by a particular venue. But when you look at the Aquatic Center and Springs, which are enterprise-generating funds, and they should be responsible for themselves, we need a higher level of accuracy. So, we promise that we'll bring that back to you as we go forward. And I'll turn it over to the director to respond to anything else. We're going to your comments.
I just want to alert everybody, we're really trying to break for lunch at noon time. So, if we can focus on the budget aspect, there's a lot to say about Warm Mineral Springs, and we'll have that opportunity in July. But I want to try to finish this conversation by noon time. If we need more time, then I'm going to have to break, and we'll finish up after lunch.
So, I just wanted to add, there was an email that went out earlier this morning to all commissioners that did have Fund 125 attached to it, and it does have the projections for this year, as well as the budget for '24 in there. If there's any specific line items that you're looking for more detail on, we're happy to provide that.
Again, thank you for all you guys do, really. It's greatly appreciated by the city, I'm sure.
Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah. So, on Budget Proposal 2446, which is Parks Maintenance, the groundskeeper. So, I remember when we had to transition from county to the city, taking care of our parks. And there were the three or four that the outsourced was going to continue doing. And one of the reasons the outsourced, it was told us was going to continue to maintain Maya-Acahachi Creek, is because the county, they were the same contractor that the county used, so they were very familiar with it. They had that higher level of expertise required for that kind of setting. So, I was very surprised to see this in this budget. And I'm wondering, why are we now going to remove that outsource and have our own staff and hiring more staff to do this? going to remove that outsource and have our own staff and hiring more staff to do this?
We're not removing that. The Budget Proposal 2446 is for the New Greenway Trail, which is the one-mile trail that's being constructed currently, and is anticipated to be complete this summer potentially. The new disc golf program, or course, maintenance of that. And then it's also taking parks that are currently outsourced, which are McKibben Pine and La Brea, and taking that cost of outsourcing.
I can stop you for the essence of time. I forgot that we are having the Greenway Trail. So when I saw Maiakehachi Creek, I was thinking park, not the new trail. My apologies for not realizing the differences. So thank you for that clarity. Is there a reason that in the HTE on page 70, we have outsourced mowing as $44,000 in the positive, but removing outsourced mowing for the disc golf in the Maiakehachi Creek has a negative $44,000? I know it's a wash, but I'm not following the logic here. And maybe that's something we can discuss offline with finance?
Yes.
Okay. The other question I have is on the Warm Mineral Springs Fund itself. On the revenues, it says other sources, and I understand in fiscal year '23, there's a negative of $1 million. And I contribute that completely to it being shut down, so it's adjusting the budget. But what I don't understand is why is there a negative for fiscal year '24 of $644,000? On page 119 in the big book. In the big book, on page 119.
I'll ask Finance to confirm, but I believe that's the fund balance that needs to be used.
No, that's a return to fund balance.
That was the return to fund balance, the $644?
Yes.
Negative, it's being returned to fund balance. The revenues are over what their anticipated expenses are. That difference, in this case, is $144,860 is a return to fund balance.
We'll be adding that to it.
Okay, so then why are we giving back one, excuse my simple terms, why are we giving back to fund balance over $1 million in revenue that we didn't have because the park was closed?
But I think that was the adopted in fiscal year '23.
Right.
And what we're seeing is that the actual of what we think it, the reason why I would say, who's that?
Yeah, no, he's right. This is what your adopted budget was. The anticipated, things have happened since October 1st, but that's not in the adopted budget. The way it will probably wash out by the end of the year, we'll probably not be giving back $1 million to fund balance.
Okay, so this, both is related to going to fund balance. One was adopted last year, this is what we anticipate to go back to fund balance, whereas this year, this is what we anticipate to go back.
Correct.
So the staffing for Warm Mineral Springs. How did we temporarily staff Warm Mineral Springs for when we reopened?
I'm sorry?
When we reopened Warm Mineral Springs, where did the staff come from to be able to reopen?
It's where it's charged to, is that what you're asking?
Where did the bodies come from? Where did the people come from?
The staff, like the admissions staff, supervisor that, came from a temp agency, and they are still in place. And the lifeguards are from, on the city side, going through the same program that we use at the Aquatic Center, through American Red Cross Training.
So are they lifeguards from the Aquatic Center that have been kind of shifted over to the Warm Mineral Springs?
Yeah, we charge back the cost of that to the Warm Mineral Springs Fund. That was not, outsourcing lifeguards was not something that we wanted to do.
Okay. So now, is this $729,000, is that continuing with temporary staff, or is this hiring new staff?
That would be all staff coming under the city umbrella.
So we're going to get rid of the temporary staff, and we're going to possibly hire them or hire new staff? So these are new positions?
Correct.
Because they're...
It depends on the direction that the board takes as it relates to the future.
And I understand that this is all, we have to budget it because we don't know what the future holds. My crystal ball is broken, and I know yours is. So I'm looking at this then, that this is 12 new positions that we may or may not have to hire, and they weren't included in that new position list that was provided.
The lifeguards would be excluded from that, because they would be in our pool of already seasonal positions. So it would only be the administrative staff that would have to be hired for this. The lifeguards would stay.
Thank you for the clarity on this.
For sure.
Thank you.
Assistant Director.
Thank you.
Are you all set, Commissioner?
I...
So. We are at 11:56, so I'm suggesting we break for lunch. When we come back, I have Commissioner Emmerich and Vice Mayor White on the list to comment.
Why don't we just see if we can finish it up?
Can we finish within the next couple of minutes?
We're on the subject.
Okay, go ahead. You're next up, Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, most of my questions on Warm Mineral Springs, Commissioner McDowell and y'all have already talked about. So the one question that leaves me with is your groundskeeper two at $87,460. What's all included in that? Because that's just not a yearly salary, correct?
No, the salary and benefits are $56,800, and then there is, you know, the equipment...
Right, so that's including equipment that he's going to need or she, whatever the case may be. So it's a big package. I just wanted it on the record that we're not hiring lawnmower guys out there at 87 grand. Because if so, City Manager, you got my hat.
Here's my application.
That's all I had, Mayor.
Okay, great. Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just had a question about procedure with this. The CIP projects, is that a different thing? I just wanted to be sure, because I had questions about that. That's it.
See, that was a question.
Yeah, okay. And I would just sort of reiterate what Commissioner Stokes said. The Aquatic Center and Warm Mineral Springs are really so very different from the rest of the work you do. I definitely want to see pro formas on Warm Mineral Springs. And to just give kudos to the team, because I've always been impressed at how in command of the numbers you've been at the Aquatic Center, and I'd like to see something similar on the Warm Mineral Springs side. City Clerk, any public comment on this item? And we are breaking for lunch, folks. Let's come back at 12:45.
Certified through the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to relocate the tortoise that may or may not be inside that burrow. This process is a permitted process through the state or Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and we won't issue the permit until we've got permission from the state that that burrow has been excavated and that tortoise has been relocated. So another question we had is, where do the tortoises go once they've been relocated? The tortoises go to a permanent conservation land, which is deemed a recipient site for tortoises. It's a very happy place for them to go, and they can live out their days. Tortoises live up to 60 years, so we want to protect them and continue their species on for further generations.
My name's David Jarrow. I'm the city arborist. Today, I'm going to show you how to measure a tree's diameter and breast height, or DBH. You begin by measuring from the ground up at 54 inches, or four and a half feet. So for me, that's right at my chest plate. So I can usually just walk up to a tree and put it right up. So today, I'm using arbor tape. I'll show you two different ways. One with arbor tape that converts circumference to diameter, and then I'll also show you with a regular tape measure. And in this case, this tree is 21 inches diameter. Now, the other method of doing this, which is probably more for typical homeowners, is everyone's got a tape measure in their garage. I got 67 inches in circumference. So now, we just have to convert that to diameter. And to do that, you're going to want to pull out a calculator, take the circumference and divide by pi, which is 3.14. I got 67 divided by 3.14, and I got 21 inches.
And there are many ways to connect with us. You will always find friendly faces when you come to City Hall. When you first walk in, you will see our Customer Care Center. The Care Center helps customers who call into the city to get answers they need in a timely fashion. Our Care Center has helped more than 10,000 customers last month alone. Next to the Call Center, you will find the self-service kiosk for code enforcement and building divisions. Using the QR code or by visiting our website, you can schedule your appointments with ease. Have you checked out our website? From employment opportunities to building codes, you can find just about anything using the search bar. Finally, you can download the North Report app and submit non-emergency issues to City Hall in less than a minute. The app has helped correct more than 12,000 issues across the city. No matter the method you choose, the city is here for you, and together, we will build a stronger community. Have you heard of the North Report app? North Report is a tool used to report non-emergency issues to City Hall. The app is built to be easy for anyone to use on the go. When you see an issue, it takes less than a minute to report the issue on the app. First, pull up the app and click Report Issue. Then, click Camera and take a picture of the issue or get the image from your photo gallery. After that, the app uses geolocation to pinpoint your exact location. Then, you choose the type of issue from the list provided. You'll finish up by including a brief description of the issue, such as where it is, what it looks like, and any other important information that will help city staff correct the issue. And then when you're done, you hit Submit, and you're ready to go. It is that simple. North Report, a simple and valuable way for you to build a stronger community.
Yo, Northport! Let's get it! Scoop, scoop, save it, baby! Alright, stop! Collaborate and listen! Parks is back with an old invention! Whenever your pet goes number two, it's your job to scoop the poo! Will it ever stop? Yo, I don't think so! Poop shouldn't be left to decompose! To the extreme, back it up like a champ! Throw it away, you did your part, get amped! Damn! Rush a baggie to the trash! Keep the water clean, do your part in a flash! Deadly! One bacteria goes steadily! Anything less than scooping is a felony! Love it or leave it, you better gangway! You better hit the bullseye, the dogs don't play! This can be a problem, but yo, we'll solve it! Check out the hook while my DJ revolves it! Scoop, scoop, save it, baby! Don't forget to scoop! Scoop, scoop, save it, baby! Yo, man, let's get out of here! Word to your popper! Scoop, scoop, save it, baby! Don't forget to scoop! Scoop, scoop, save it, baby! Don't forget to scoop! Yo, man, let's get out of here! Word to your popper! Scoop, scoop, save it, baby! Don't forget to scoop! Don't forget to scoop! Don't forget to scoop! Don't forget to scoop! Yo, Northport! Let's get it!
During significant rain events, Northport nearly always floods in certain areas of the city. This is thanks to the locally-named Maiakehachi Creek, also known as the Big Slough watershed. The 195-square-mile drainage area flows through DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota Counties, then through our city to exit at Charlotte Harbor. As the city of Northport is located at the low end of the Big Slough watershed drainage system, the city's current flooding and water quality conditions are attributed not only to the city's growth, but also to upstream runoff in the DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota County portions of the Big Slough. During significant rain events, ponding can also occur. Ponding occurs in low-lying areas that are characterized by poorly-drained or super-saturated soils. With back-to-back rainfall events, the ground is totally saturated, which increases the runoff during a storm. The city works hard to maintain its stormwater conveyance system, which is comprised of roadside swales draining into 79 miles of named waterways and 132 miles of retention ditches that interconnect with each other and with the Maiakehachi Creek. There are 64 water control structures, of which 23 are gated water control structures, five are gated drop structures, 28 are fixed weir structures, and eight are drop structures. The control elevations of these structures are designed so that water is retained in the waterways in a step-down elevation system configuration. This means the water levels in the waterway segments between structures progressively decrease in elevation from north to south and from east to west. This system configuration allows both retention of stormwater runoff for water quality treatment and storage for potable water use. In preparation for a storm, the gates are opened as needed to convey floodwaters. The city has an ongoing program to inspect and replace old corroded structures. Since 2006, 13 of the high-priority structures have been replaced or rehabilitated. The city also has a program to clear the ditches of sediment deposits that have accumulated over time, and clear fallen trees and debris in the Maiakehachi Creek. This also helps restore the flow capacity of the waterways. Long story short, Northport is prone to flooding, but the city works hard to maintain conveyance channels, water control structures, and procedures put in place to lessen the impact. When there is a hurricane or significant rain event, the city gets into response and recovery mode quickly after. Please stay safe out there. Please stay safe out there.
Oh my gosh, this is gonna be great!
This is George, your city arborist for the city of Northport. Today, we're going to discuss the tree permit. I get a lot of calls about the tree permit. A lot of people are confused on how to fill it out. So I'm just going to do a quick overview of the tree permit. People ask me, "Why do we need a tree permit?" We are 21 years in a row Tree City. We try to maintain our tree canopy. We have a 35% canopy requirement that is in the ULDC code. Tree permit is $18.75. If you're caught cutting down a tree and do not obtain a permit, you will be fined $250. The tree permit is good for a year. At the top left-hand corner of the permit, it says "Inspections." There's a phone number. Please call that number. It's an automated system that will set up a final inspection for the inspector to come out and close out the permit. Please have the permit posted somewhere when the tree work is being done and at the final inspection. If the paperwork is not where the inspector can find it, they will fail the inspection. You can drop off your permit at City Hall. While it must be dropped off, you cannot email it in. There's a drop box for small permits or the drive-through window. Okay, this has been another video of Ask the Arborist. If you have any questions, please visit the city website at cityofnorthport.com.
When you're following behind large trucks, you want to make sure that you're following at a safe distance. And if you don't know that safe distance, just remember if you can't see their mirrors, they can't see you.
We stop at about 1,000 houses a day. In order for us to complete that, you know, and be safe, you know, we try not to rush in between the houses. It takes us a little time. We're not trying to slow you down. We're just trying to get things up in an orderly fashion. How our trucks work, we have two different types of trucks that pick up residential garbage and recycle. We have one that's a side loader, and we have one that's a front loader. When that bucket comes out of the top of the truck and is positioned to pick up cans up front, you have probably eight, nine feet in front of you that the people behind you passing may not know about.
On a large truck, construction vehicles, etc., there's a lot of flashing lights. So just make sure their brake lights, you know, you're paying attention to their brake lights and their blinkers so you know what they're intending to do. So you want to make sure that you're not on a double yellow line or a curve, and you have good visibility for oncoming traffic so you can pass safely.
If you're too close and you go to pass, you never know what's around the corner.
When coming up to an intersection behind a large vehicle, realize that you can't pass within 100 foot of an intersection. Go through that intersection safely, following at a safe distance. And then, once your lines allow you to pass, do so safely when there's not oncoming traffic.
Safety first. Don't risk your life to get somewhere sooner. All right? You're going to hurt yourself for somebody else. Let's just keep it safe.
Hello, I'm David, and today we're doing another episode of Ask the Arborist. We've had a lot of questions come in about gopher tortoises in the city of Northport. We certainly have a lot of them. And today, we're going to answer some of those questions that have been coming in. The first one is, what happens when there's a gopher tortoise on a vacant lot and a builder puts in a land clearing permit and wants to build or develop that lot? Well, when they submit a land clearing permit, myself or George Murphy, the other arborist, we go out to the land and we walk the lot for gopher tortoise burrows. This is what they look like. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species, and up to 350 different animals depend on this burrow. So the state or the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has protected the animal and its burrows. So we do our very best to make sure that these do not get disturbed. By doing so, we walk vacant lots when land-clear permits get issued to ensure that there are not any burrows. If there are burrows or gopher tortoises on that lot, we do not issue a land-clear permit. What we do instead is contact the builder and let them know that they have to hire an authorized gopher tortoise agent who is certified through the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to relocate the tortoise that may or may not be inside that burrow. This process is a permitted process through the state or Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and we won't issue the permit until we've got permission from the state that that burrow has been excavated and that tortoise has been relocated. So another question we had is, where do the tortoises go once they've been relocated? The tortoises go to a permanent conservation land, which is deemed a recipient site for tortoises. It's a very happy place for them to go, and they can live out their days. Tortoises live up to 60 years, so we want to protect them and continue their species on for further generations. Morning, Northport. My name is David Jero. I'm the city arborist. Today, I'm going to show you how to measure a tree's diameter and rest height, or DBH. So you begin by measuring from the ground up at 54 inches or four and a half feet. So for me, that's right at my chest plate. So I can usually just walk up to a tree and put it right up. So today, I'm using Arbor Tape. I'll show you two different ways. One with Arbor Tape that converts circumference to diameter, and then I'll also show you with a regular tape measure. And in this case, this tree is 21 inches diameter. Now, the other method of doing this, which is probably more for typical homeowners, is everyone's got a tape measure in their garage. I got 67 inches in circumference. So now, we just have to convert that to diameter. To do that, you're going to want to pull out a calculator. Take the circumference and divide by pi, which is 3.14. I got 67 divided by 3.14, and I got 21 inches.
At the city of Northport, we are here to serve you. And there are many ways to connect with us. You will always find friendly faces when you come to City Hall. When you first walk in, you will see our Customer Care Center. The Care Center helps customers who call into the city to get answers they need in a timely fashion. Our Care Center has helped more than 10,000 customers last month alone. Next to the Call Center, you will find the self-service kiosk for code enforcement and building divisions. Using the QR code or by visiting our website, you can schedule your appointments with ease. Have you checked out our website? From employment opportunities to building codes, you can find just about anything using the search bar. Finally, you can download the North Report app and submit non-emergency issues to City Hall in less than a minute. The app has helped correct more than 12,000 issues across the city. No matter the method you choose, the city is here for you. And together, we will build a stronger community. Have you heard of the North Report app? North Report is a tool used to report non-emergency issues to City Hall. The app is built to be easy for anyone to use on the go. When you see an issue, it takes less than a minute to report the issue on the app. First, pull up the app and click "Report Issue." Then, click Camera and take a picture of the issue or get the image from your photo gallery. After that, the app uses geolocation to pinpoint your exact location. Then, you choose the type of issue from the list provided. You'll finish up by including a brief description of the issue such as where it is, what it looks like, and any other important information that will help city staff correct the issue. And when you're done, you hit Submit, and you're ready to go. It is that simple. North Report, a simple and valuable way for you to build a stronger community.
Why do we flood? During significant rain events, Northport nearly always floods in certain areas of the city. This is thanks to the locally named Mayacahachi Creek, also known as the Big Slough Watershed. The 195-square-mile drainage area flows through DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota Counties, then through our city to exit at Charlotte Harbor. As the city of Northport is located at the low end of the Big Slough Watershed Drainage System, the city's current flooding and water quality conditions are attributed not only to the city's growth, but also to upstream runoff in the DeSoto, Manatee, and Sarasota County portions of the Big Slough. During significant rain events, ponding can also occur. Ponding occurs in low-lying areas that are characterized by poorly drained or super saturated soils. With back-to-back rainfall events, the ground is totally saturated, which increases the runoff during a storm. The city works hard to maintain its stormwater conveyance system, which is comprised of roadside swales draining into 79 miles of named waterways and 132 miles of retention ditches that interconnect with each other and with the Mayacahachi Creek. There are 64 water control structures, of which 23 are gated water control structures; five are gated drop structures; 28 are fixed weir structures; and eight are drop structures. The control elevations of these structures are designed so that water is retained in the waterways in a step-down elevation system configuration. This means the water levels in the waterway segments between structures progressively decrease in elevation from north to south and from east to west. This system configuration allows both retention of stormwater runoff for water quality treatment and storage for potable water use. In preparation for a storm, the gates are opened as needed to convey floodwaters. The city has an ongoing program to inspect and replace old corroded structures. Since 2006, 13 of the high priority structures have been replaced or rehabilitated. The city also has a program to clear the ditches of sediment deposits that have accumulated. The city also has a program to clear the ditches of sediment deposits that have accumulated over time and clear fallen trees and debris in the Mayacahachi Creek. This also helps restore the flow capacity of the waterways. Long story short, Northport is prone to flooding, but the city works hard to maintain conveyance channels, water control structures, and procedures put in place to lessen the impact. When there is a hurricane or significant rain event, the city gets into response and recovery mode quickly after. Please stay safe out there.
Oh my gosh, this is gonna be great!
Oh my gosh, this is gonna be great! Woohoo!
This is George, your city arborist for the city of Northport. Today, we're going to discuss the tree permit. I get a lot of calls about the tree permit. A lot of people are confused on how to fill it out, so I'm just going to do a quick overview of the tree permit. People ask me, "Why do we need a tree permit?" We are a 21-years-in-a-row tree city. We try to maintain our tree canopy. We have a 35% canopy requirement that is in the ULDC code. Tree permit is $18.75. If you're caught cutting down a tree and do not obtain a permit, you will be fined $250. The tree permit is good for a year. At the top-left-hand corner of the permit, it says "Inspections." There's a phone number. Please call that number. It's an automated system that will set up a final inspection for the inspector to come out and close out the permit. Please have the permit posted somewhere when the tree work is being done and at the final inspection. If the paperwork is not where the inspector can find it, they will fail the inspection. You can drop off your permit at City Hall. While it must be dropped off, you cannot email it in. There's a drop box for small permits or the drive-through window. Okay, this has been another video of Ask the Arborist. If you have any questions, please visit the city website at cityofnorthport.com.
If you're happy and you know it, clap your wings. If you're happy and you know it, clap your wings. If you're happy and you know it, you really ought to show it. If you're happy and you know it, clap your wings.
When you're following behind large trucks, you want to make sure that you're following at a safe distance. And if you don't know that safe distance, just remember, if you can't see their mirrors, they can't see you.
We stop at about 1,000 houses a day. In order for us to complete that, you know, and be safe, you know, we try not to rush in between the houses. It takes us a little time. We're not trying to slow you down. We're just trying to get things up in an orderly fashion. How our trucks work, we have two different types of trucks that pick up residential garbage and recycle. We have one that's a side loader, and we have one that's a front loader. When that bucket comes out of the top of the truck and is positioned to pick up cans up front, you have probably eight, nine feet in front of you that the people behind you passing may not know about.
On a large truck, construction vehicles, etc., there's a lot of flashing lights. So just make sure their brake lights, you know, you're paying attention to their brake lights and their blinkers, so you know what they're intending to do. So you want to make sure that you're not on a double-yellow line or a curve, and you have good visibility for oncoming traffic, so you can pass safely.
If you're too close and you go to pass, you never know what's around the corner.
When coming up to an intersection behind a large vehicle, realize that you can't pass within 100 foot of an intersection. Go through that intersection safely, following at a safe distance, and then, once your lines allow you to pass, do so safely when there's not oncoming traffic.
Safety first. Don't risk your life to get somewhere sooner. All right? You're going to hurt yourself or somebody else. Let's just keep it safe.
Hello, I'm David, and today, we're doing another episode of Ask the Arborist. We've had a lot of questions come in about gopher tortoises in the city of Northport. We certainly have a lot of them, and today, we're going to answer some of those questions that have been coming in. The first one is, what happens when there's a gopher tortoise on a vacant lot and a builder puts in a land-clearing permit and wants to build or develop that lot? Well, when they submit a land-clearing permit, myself or George Murphy, the other arborist, we go out to the land and we walk the lot for gopher tortoise burrows. This is what they look like. The gopher tortoise is a keystone species, and up to 350 different animals depend on this burrow. So the state or the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission has protected the animal and its burrows. So we do our very best to make sure that these do not get disturbed. By doing so, we walk vacant lots when land-clear permits get issued to ensure that there are not any burrows. If there are burrows or gopher tortoises on that lot, we do not issue a land-clear permit. What we do instead is contact the builder and let them know that they have to hire an authorized gopher tortoise agent who is certified through the Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission to relocate the tortoise that may or may not be inside that burrow. This process is a permitted process through the state or Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission, and we won't issue the permit until we've got permission from the state that that burrow has been excavated and that tortoise has been relocated. So another question we had is, where do the tortoises go once they've been relocated? The tortoises go to a permanent conservation land, which is deemed a recipient site for tortoises. It's a very happy place for them to go, and they can live out their days. Tortoises live up to 60 years, so we want to protect them and continue their species on for further generations. Morning, Northport. My name is David Jarrow. I'm the city arborist. Today, I'm going to show you how to measure a tree's diameter and breast height, or DBH. You begin by measuring from the ground up at 54 inches or four and a half feet. So for me, that's right at my chest plate. I can usually just walk up to a tree and put it right up. So today, I'm using arbor tape. I'll show you two different ways. One with arbor tape that converts circumference to diameter, and then I'll also show you with a regular tape measure. And in this case, this tree is 21 inches diameter. Now, the other method of doing this, which is probably more for typical homeowners, is everyone's got a tape measure in their garage. I got 67 inches in circumference. So now, we just have to convert that to diameter. And to do that, you're going to want to pull out a calculator, take the circumference and divide by pi, which is 3.14. I got 67 divided by 3.14, and I got 21 inches.
Day five, and we are back in chambers. All five commissioners are here. All charter officers who were here this morning are here, and our representatives for police and fire are also here. So we will move on to item 23-1001. City manager, take it away.
All right, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is our social services department conversation. And as we begin, we talk about the impact of Hurricane Ian, as we've done previously. The involvement and engagement throughout the community was vast, as you can imagine, and social services had a lot to do as people were needing not only the directional resources to recover, but the conversations that we knew we had, and as well as FEMA being on-site at our STC. Our division provided a lot of response and had an increase of financial assistance inquiries of 67%, which is a large amount. But again, that's to be expected based on what people were going through. The United Way of South Sarasota County, we have to give them credit as they distributed 300 Hurricane Ian voucher packets totaling $75,000 to Northport residents. There was no shortage of outreach from our community partners during that difficult time, so without naming them all, I think we need to be all very grateful for what happened throughout our community. We could not take care of it all, and I'm glad people recognize that. For someone who had been here for roughly a year, it definitely made me feel good regarding how the region came to our defense. I know that Public Safety will discuss how their different service partners helped them out, but for a while there, we were getting a lot, a lot of attention from, you know, you can start at the state level with the governor coming down here multiple times. We received a lot of attention, and it was all very well-appreciated as we moved forward. The third bullet there talks about the Hurricane Ian relief funds from United Way, $30,000, and Awaken Church, who they are a strong partner in our community on a daily basis, let alone what they did during this disaster time. So again, thanks to everyone, and thanks to our social services department led by Ms. Corillo and her staff, who worked a lot in timeless hours to make sure that we served the citizens as much as possible. I'll stop here if she wants to add anything to her Hurricane Ian talking points.
We've been busy, as you can imagine.
No, you've got to press the button in a minute.
It has instructions.
Yes.
Got it. I don't think that I necessarily have to add anything to that. As you can imagine, we've been busy, but one thing that we did see when Hurricane Ian occurred was our strong connections with our nonprofit partners. I know that fourth bullet with us assisting the cleanup, it wasn't to go over there and, you know, clean up debris. That wasn't the priority. The priority was to make sure that they were up and running immediately following the hurricane, because we wanted to make sure that we had a point of direction for all the donations that were coming to us. Our priority obviously had been United Way of South Sarasota County, but we wanted to make sure that any overflow of donations came here directly to Northport, and what better place to have it than next door to us.
Okay, all right. We will keep going through the slide deck, but we talk about the six positions that are already authorized within this particular area. No new ones were added there. We talk about the quality of life, of supporting and expanding our resources through partnerships and nonprofits, special events. This rolls right into the value that our team provides. They are a small team, but I think their impact is great, and I think a lot of you have seen over the last year, residents who have been in despair and been able to reach out to us, and us having this particular asset under our umbrella has hopefully improved their ability to get those resources sooner rather than later. We talk about serving the minimum of 80 residents annually in Skills and Life programs, and these are some of the performance measures that when you talk about, we know that the life challenges that our community experiences is a real thing. It is not something that always gets the front page of the news. It is not always something that comes to the front page of people's minds, but, you know, like Mr. Duvall said in his public comment, you know, there are different people on every end of the spectrum. So continuing to provide these services is important. The creation and implementation of the NP-Squared program, the Northport Nonprofit United, I think that, you know, us moving forward with the advisory committee and, you know, this year has been a year in process and procedure for that particular program, and ideally, we will be able to take that money. I know we're sitting here in the middle of June, but the end of the fiscal year is coming up on us very quickly, so hopefully, it'll have a better impact in next So hopefully, it'll have a better impact in next year. And like I said earlier, when we talk about new programs and what we do, it's just a matter of keeping at it, making sure that, again, one way is never the right way, but continuation is the key there. Promoting outreach activities as well as our percentage of our population served through tenants experiencing challenges. We know affordable housing. We've talked about that a lot as well. We know that that's a priority. Our development services team is working on our code and options that will provide you different ways to help different families and individuals in our community. Those are important. So we're not done by a long shot in how we serve our community from a social services standpoint. And again, recognizing we can't do it all, we have to have good partners. As you see, the recommendation of social services is fairly minimal due to the fact of how we are currently staffed. The Ford Explorer, the vehicle, the impact, there is a vehicle replacement here that we are working through, and I think we've had some of this conversation with our commissioners and various stakeholders. We are at a point where even one of our leadership at this team was using their own personal vehicle on a regular basis to get some of these things done. And so we really had to look at our pooled vehicles and how we actually have those set up and structured and make sure that we have access and give the team what they needed. We've worked through our public works department and fleet to ensure that, you know, there are different options for what we need, so everyone doesn't just say, oh, I need this, you know, big, new, shiny vehicle. And that was never their intent, but I didn't want that intent to be misconstrued as well. So whether it's a low, medium, or high version of what we need, we're trying to make sure that we're always conscious and responsible of what the public would view as we increase our different inventory of our pooled vehicles. But I'll stop right there, Madam Mayor. Happy to answer any questions that you or the team may have regarding our social services.
Okay, the floor is open. Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, this vehicle that you're looking for, I'm not disputing that whatsoever. What you kept saying was pool vehicle. Is it still a pool vehicle, or is it going to be dedicated to social services in its entirety?
So this one here, if I'm not mistaken, this will be theirs. They have a 2006 vehicle right now. This will be replacing that. As you've seen through the budget of what you've reviewed, there were vehicles requested through communications, city manager's office, economic development. There were a lot of needs. And what we said is we need to do better organizing what we have, as opposed to just saying new, new, yes, new, new. So I think the bagel bus is one of the vehicles that we tend to think about, the ones that we move in as our pool vehicles. But we've just expanded so much and the need to traverse through our 104 square miles just grows, and we're doing a better job of organizing our pooled inventory so that everyone has what they need, and everyone doesn't need one just for them specifically.
Okay. When are you going to answer my question?
She answered your question when I said it's for them specifically. I was trying to give you a little bit more detail on the rest of the organization.
So is it a pool vehicle or a dedicated vehicle? Okay, because it needs to be dedicated to the department, in my opinion.
And their 2006 Jeep, I think, first of all, it's old. That is, how many years? I can't even count right now.
Seventeen.
Yeah, 2000, that's 17 years?
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
It just doesn't fit the needs of the town. It's not big enough for us to transfer donations.
Turn your mic.
Just keep it on.
Follow the instructions.
Really? The words are small. No, so the vehicle itself doesn't meet the needs of the division now. So there's transfer of donations, and it doesn't, well, all of us, there's six of us in the division. So when we do trainings or when we do events, we all have to use our personal vehicles. So that is the reason that we're asking.
That's the reason why I ask, because it needs to be yours for your usage. I don't want you to wait in line to get a vehicle when you have to do something.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
And my second thing was, this is one of my favorite departments, Mayor. So you are probably the most understaffed and overworked section that we have in the city. As the city grows, so do the needs of the people out there. I was a little flabbergasted when I did not see any need for new staff. I would take that into consideration and look, because the more staff that you have, and I'm not saying 10 employees, I'm saying add employees as you can, because the more employees you have, the more people you can help. And the more people that are out there with needs is just getting beyond our reach. I know you're working with nonprofits, but as a city, we've grabbed this, we've taken it on our own, and we need to help as many as we can. So I appreciate everything that you all do. Keep up the good work, but let's expand a little bit, or keep that in mind. So thank you very much. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Vice Mayor White.
Yes, I have to comment on that we had a 2006 vehicle still in use. I mean, that was, for me, that was like two vehicles or what would go. I just can't believe you've had a vehicle for 17 years. So I'm well-needed, okay, for that new vehicle, and that I'm glad you're going to have individual use of it. I had a question about that $200 million block grant that's coming, being funneled from the county. It's called Resilient SRQ. Are we going to be involved with that at all?
You want to?
You're going to have to reveal.
Yes. So the grant itself, when you look at the parameters of what it can be used for, low to moderate income impact is included in there. So I think that as we huddle as a team, and I want to say it might be next week where we talk about the projects that we want the county to strongly consider, I think that we all will be at the table for that. Now, let me be clear. Jerome thinks that $200 of that million should come straight to the city of Northport. It will not all come to the city of Northport. You still have Inglewood and some other areas around us that were impacted that will take some of it. But we firmly believe that we should get the bulk of that funding based on our impact. And we are glad to be in that conversation, but we all will be at the table for that to answer your question.
Okay, but ultimately, will it be funneled through social services?
I don't believe so. I think the county will handle the compliance and the monitoring and the distribution and all of that. We are just a player at the table.
Okay, because didn't they pick, was it the United Way that is going to process that, or no? Do I have that mixed up with something else?
I think that's something different.
Okay.
This $200 million goes straight through the county and not, yeah, it's not through nonprofits. But I will say that, as you may have seen or read in the paper, the county is sort of reevaluating their distribution of services and how they handle social services throughout the county. And I think that that's something we all need to keep our eye on, because as I've said since I've been here, the model that we had was a little bit different than what I had experienced, and I hope that the new model will have a different outcome for the city of Northport.
Okay. And just the last thing, the senior center building itself, is that under social services? Right? Yeah. And just to put this out there, we had a couple of residents, again, asking about, and we had the discussion last year, because the Peterson Room, which is the larger room, is not available for rental anymore. We decided that last year, I think, and some residents have called me and said, you know, there's very, we're lacking places for people to have smaller events or smaller gatherings, and they were wondering why that wasn't available. And I just said it was just an administrative decision to take that off the table. And I don't remember the exact reasons, but just to throw that out there, I don't know why that, what's the problem with that, but, you know, maybe for the future, to bring that back?
I don't.
I don't know. I don't remember what that's being used for.
Those, the community education center, the two, it used to be three areas, now it's down to two. Awaken has two of those areas, and then the senior center is a tenant on the.
On the right side, when you walk in.
Peterson Room.
Peterson Room.
And that, I think primarily, was the reason is that there's a tenant in place there.
Oh, that's right.
That would take away the space availability.
Okay, so the senior center uses that Peterson Room themselves?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
And we do use it as well, too, when we have our functions, but we work through them.
Okay, but they don't make it available for rental? That's not part of their?
No, no, because it was removed.
Okay, thank you. That's all for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah. As the follower of vehicles from day one, having the 2006 vehicle is quite impressive. Good job. I did see in the backup materials that you are going to repurpose it.
Yes.
So what is it going to be repurposed for? Is it going to be repurposed in your department, or is city manager going to find a new home for it?
No.
Or a new garage for it?
No, fleet has identified that it will be for project graduation.
For this year or next year?
Next year, I believe.
We have one for this year.
Kenny might have to. For next year, excellent. Yeah, but it still works.
It still works.
There's nothing wrong with the 2006 vehicle for somebody who's 17 or 18 years old.
No, we still use it.
It's free.
It still gets its maintenance, but it just doesn't fit our needs anymore. It's small.
Excellent. To Vice Mayor's point about not having places to rent for small gatherings and small events, we have the Morgan Center that you can rent rooms at, there's the Mullin Center that they can rent rooms at, and those rooms range from tiny to massive. So I don't know why somebody isn't directing them to those two resources, but.
They do about them, but they said availability. They weren't available when they needed them.
Got to get it in early. Thank you.
Okay, you're all set?
Yeah.
I have a couple of things. One is thank you for all you do. And I think sometimes we think about social services as being reactive, you know, people walk in needing help. But I know for a fact that you guys are proactive and you're out in the community making those connections. And in particular, I want to thank you and your team for being available at Palm Port to work with their leasing office and establish those relationships. And I know that you left literature in terms of what your department could offer those folks. I don't know if you're doing programming there or not, but I really want to applaud you for that and hope that as new income-restricted housing comes online, that you would do the same kind of thing to increase awareness of how you can help the folks who live there. Thank you. Thinking about the electric service tax, I know you guys have some utility assistance programs available.
We do.
Let's make sure we optimize everything that's available through the state and the feds. Val isn't here, but maybe she could keep an eye out for you and make sure that we're taking full advantage of all of those programs to help our residents. And then the only other thing I heard, and this is sort of a post-Ian comment, our nonprofits did a phenomenal job, but I think there were times when we had two or three organizations in one place and maybe no organization somewhere where they might have been helpful. And so I was thinking that maybe I would ask you to consider some post-event coordination with nonprofits, but then thinking back with Ian, no one had self-service, you know, for days afterwards. So maybe we're in season now, maybe a little pre-planning with those organizations that we know deliver that kind of on-the-street assistance, where ahead of time, we sort of identify those areas of the city that are optimal for the distribution of water and supplies, et cetera, et cetera. So people know ahead of time, you know, where they need to be. And I don't think that would cost budget money. It might put your new vehicle to use doing that kind of coordination, but I just had that thought. So that is it for me. I don't see any other lights on. City clerk, any public comment?
First one.
Okay, let's move on to the police department, 23-1002.
All right, here we go.
Here they come.
Yes.
Here comes the team. Police.
Everybody get their eras, right?
All right.
And city manager, I'm assuming, city manager, I'm assuming that if any of these teams need some action from us, that you will let us know proactively. I won't keep asking.
Correct. So we, you know, again, that was the process.
Yeah.
The process, and what I say about our public safety teams, police and fire rescue, is they participated in the process. I've been in places where public safety takes a very higher approach to say, oh, you shall not ask us to reduce anything because we'll just say that people will die if you don't give us what we need. You don't have a team like that here. You have a thoughtful team. They put a lot of work into what they propose and rationale. We've actually started some city stat meetings with them, and they are the beginning products of how we analyze questions and use data through our finance and performance management personnel so that we can answer questions of why we need what we need and quit pulling on heartstrings and history. And it makes a difference. So this team here, and deputy chief was the one who went through the very first one, and he survived it, and he did a great job. So, but, you know, it's again about telling our story and being able to defend our needs. So I think they're good, and they can speak, of course, for themselves, but we'll get there. But as we look at the first screen, we're talking about the impact of Ian. Chief, I know this slide does not even begin to do you justice for everything that we had to go through as it relates to, you know, saving and rescue of life during the event. But you were supported strongly, as I said earlier, by some of the region's partners. We do have up here as to the damage that you sustained yourself through police headquarters, but I think that as we go forward, and you may have some comments that you want to talk about how the impact of the hurricane impacted police then going forward. So I'll let you address this slide even more.
So as you can see, the damages that we sustained there, one of the other major issues was the loss of equipment that we sustained during the hurricane, which is huge impact on our operation. Because we had such a heavy impact, we had resources from all over the state actually came in to help us. Without our resources, we would have been in serious, serious trouble. But during this process, we have identified several areas that hopefully that we don't ever get confronted with, but we've identified areas that we have deficiencies in and where we can do better, as far as equipment and stuff like that.
And I'll just highlight also the over $1 million spent in overtime. If you remember back when we were, you know, talking about payroll and we're talking about the impact of some of how all of that happened, it was a huge, huge effort to work through the FEMA process. And again, without Val being right here on my side, I know a lot of that is reimbursable through the process of FEMA. So it is not something that the city had to put the bill for, but again, very important, don't want that to be understated. I spoke earlier about the police needs, and we talked about the new headquarters and the consultant, and how we are still identifying that particular land. We talked this week earlier about the cost of the design services through one of the commissioner questions, and hopefully that puts the emphasis back on understanding that the 16 positions that we've asked for in public safety are designed to keep us on track with the growth of the city. That's the easiest way I can say it. And once we get there, I would say this is a two-year process because if we were to do 16 next year and then get to 12 the next year after that, we will be in alignment with what the consultant said in this year to catch us up. Now, I can almost guarantee you by the time we catch up to that, the number would have changed. And they would say, well, I told you to do that two or three years ago, and now that you're doing that, the number has switched. But, you know, that's part of the process. We're trying to bite off as much as we can within the amount of money that we have to spend. So I think we're comfortable with the 16, and if there's any questions about that, we will, of course, answer that. But that's the pathway to what we feel like success would look like. When you think about the priorities of the police department, they're all going to be under safe community. We want to have a low crime rate, and we want to have high effective and efficient services. Having good services do you know good if they're not available when people need them? So I believe that what we have seen over the course of time is our police staff and department making sure that we meet the highest levels of quality. When we look at our performance measures, of course, we want people to feel safe. Of course, we want to maintain our national averages so that we are in sync with being recognized as one of the better police and public safety units, not only in the state but in the country, in my opinion, in crime rates. And as we talk about that, and as we talked about that, like I said during the city stat, those rates and their numbers are directly a reflection on the number of people that we have. And when you think about the number of people we have, think about the quality of people that we have, how they're trained, how the chief is able to promote from within. When we go to these ceremonies that talks about the credentials of those people who are serving our community, we want the best of. are serving our community, we want the best of the best. And I know that does not always mean being paid at the top level all the time, but it's not all about pay. We do have other benefits to Commissioner McDowell's point that this city has to offer, and I think it starts with leadership and culture. And when you look at it and you look at what we have and who we have, I think we set the example and the bar very high. You were a ringing endorsement of that earlier this year when you passed that amount to bring their salaries in alignment with the peer jurisdictions. That was a big move, and it needs to be appreciated. That was done a couple of months ago, and here we are still in budget. So imagine if we came to you now and said that we needed it as opposed to a couple of months ago, we'd be behind the curve. So us bringing it to you and you seeing it in a way that was very time-sensitive is greatly appreciated, not only for myself but our team, but as I've gone through and heard from a lot of the chiefs, particular department members, they are very grateful for your immediate acknowledgement of that particular problem. When you look at the budget proposals here on this particular slide, we talk about the sixteen people, this is what it really breaks down into. You have police officers of twelve, you have a police sergeant, a network technician, public safety telecommunicator, as well as a records technician, that was all included in what we provided. Other items that were included within what you are looking at as far as your budget proposal include software, an increased specialty paid positions of $34,000, traffic and equipment and maintenance, vehicle wash, as well as well-known park substation maintenance to be included. Those are, these are already included in what we've asked you to consider for adoption. Some other ones are the building, the security system, the hurricane trailer supplies, intel unit equipment, software licenses, email security service, as well as special response team equipment. I would go out on short land to say that there's always going to be these kind of items that you see in public safety, but I think that not only when we talk about the crime and the quality of life, our traffic needs improvement, and that's just because we live in an area that's very transient of different people throughout the country. They drive one way there, they think they can drive the same way here, and we're the lucky recipients of that. But as long as we keep our eye on making sure we have programs such as the reckless program that the chief instituted this year, we will be proactive in making sure that we curb their behavior. Since I've been here, and I almost see this on a daily basis, the driving behavior of this area is no bueno. I do not like it. I think it's very bad. But again, these are conversations that me and the chief have, and we talk about how we can improve our area, and I think that keeping our finger on the pulse of that is very important. So you see Do the Right Thing up there, you see other programs and things that this administration of our Police Department is very, very aware of and in tune with. I don't want to make sure, I want to make sure that doesn't go unrecognized. And replacement vehicles, they're in the same boat, you know, they're not, they're not asking for vehicles that they need in advance. No one needs the latest and greatest, but we do want to make sure that if an emergency happens, that our team can respond to it as much as possible. These things here, the things that were not recommended, traffic cones and batteries and drone information, one thing I'll say as we look at these and, you know, ones that were not recommended, and it goes over to this slide as well, a lot of these you'll notice are sort of some lower-priced items. As our year starts to finish itself and it sort of paints the picture of anything that's available, we will go and see if we can tackle some of these to get them in this year as opposed to saying they weren't recommended next year. But police is on that same list of priority. We have to make sure they have what they need. And just because I look up here and I see telecommunications equipment wasn't funded, it doesn't mean we don't believe it's important. It means that we're all trying to participate in the better balancing and oversight of our budget process, and we got to thank them for being at the table to experience it with us. So I'll stop talking there, Madam Mayor. We're happy to answer any questions, but we always have to thank public safety for their service, so we want to thank them.
Okay, thank you. I'm opening the floor to my fellow commissioners. I see fingers moving. Okay, Vice Mayor Wyatt? Yes, so we have, it's actual twelve, twelve new officers, so I have that number right? Because I had other numbers written down here. I had twenty-two, then I had sixteen, then I had twelve.
There you go. So twenty-two was the first number that we started with. We cut it to sixteen.
Okay.
Of the sixteen, twelve are officers, one's a sergeant, one's a technician, one's a public safety telecommunicator, and one's a record technician.
Okay, and then we do have a ratio, correct? How many residents requires an officer? Don't we have a ratio that's used? And are we, is this bringing us up to that where that's supposed to be?
This is concurrent to what the consultant had recommended during that process, so we're using those numbers based off of that study that was done.
Okay.
And it does not bring you up to what you need.
We currently sit, Vice Mayor, at a 1.5 ratio, where the FBI's national is 2.0 per thousand, so two officers per thousand residents, which is what the consultant, like the city manager and chief said, to get us that pathway moving forward for the next several years, where we need to get with the growth and to get us to that ratio.
Two, you're saying it's two per thousand? That's where we like to be?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're already behind the eight ball right now, but we realize that we can't add forty new cops in a particular budget year, so we know that we gradually have to increase this.
Okay, all right. And then, wait a minute, where's my other question here? Oh, just for comparison, the general fund, this is part of public safety. I know we don't have it broken up just for police and fire. What do you say, public safety on the pie chart? It's...
They're combined.
They're combined.
Into one particular pillar.
Yeah, okay.
And code enforcement.
Oh, and code enforcement, okay. Can you, do you know what that number is? Because I had, again, I was looking at different pie charts, and I didn't write down fast enough. Is it eighty-three percent, or is it...
Eighty-three percent is public safety of the general fund.
That's what it is, from the general fund.
That's combined of all the public safety.
All of them, okay, okay. Just so when I have conversations with citizens about cutting the budget and I show them, well, this is where we spend most of the money, is this where you want to cut from?
Well, they'll say, no, cut from the city manager.
That's right. That's right. No, they don't. Okay, and I think that's all the questions I had, so thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Stokes.
Well, first, I want to thank all you folks, your entire department, for all you do for our city and keeping us safe.
Thank you.
Your, I mean, the community outreach of this Police Department is outstanding. I mean, the Do the Right Thing program, the fact that you engage in our community, it's special compared to cities around this country and especially cities this size and growing. The one thing I noticed, I'm good with the budget, I'm good with the staffing, grants, I hope that we got our grant folks working every which way we can to find us dollars to help us and supplement our department. Since City Manager brought it up, I can't find anywhere where my Taser-10 is getting paid for, and I want to know if we can reallocate some money from the City Managers Department to pay for those. But other than that, again, you guys, you're all doing a fabulous, fabulous job. Thank you so much for helping us safe, and always stay safe yourselves.
We have a great team, sir, and we appreciate the support. I do want to say, though, that we do apply for multitude of grants, and we're always looking out for grant opportunities. Unfortunately, sometimes, you know, because we have such a great city, sometimes we're not good candidates for those grant funds.
Great point.
Right, that's true.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay, Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, thank you, and that's a great point. Because we are doing so well with crime and being proactive instead of reactive, our grant isn't always accepted. So you're not being rewarded, you're being kind of penalized. If we do get grant money, I would, speaking for myself, would be more inclined to say, don't use it towards the twelve that we've already budgeted in this budget, use it for the new people, so that we, instead of twelve, maybe we get fifteen or sixteen or whatever, and increase it a little bit better. We already know from listening to my fellow commissioners, it seems like, yeah, twelve is going to be the answer, so that's a yes, but if you get grant money, increase it to the fourteen or sixteen or twenty or whatever you guys can get. I think that would be a more prudent way of doing it instead of cutting what we've already got going. That's just my two cents. All right, help me understand budget proposal 2580, and the City Manager might have to answer this because 2580, it's on page 106 in the big book. And it's additional shotguns for patrol. Why are we not funding additional, why are we not funding additional shotguns that are vital to...
So for the longest time, Commissioner, we didn't, we didn't have additional shotguns assigned to patrol vehicles or rifles, so when the chief came back, you know, it's been five years now, he saw that and wanted to start implementing and adding shotguns and rifles into the officers as secondary and additional weapons for our patrol services. So these are just slowly, instead of asking for a big, you know, increase in that, we are slowly adding, and we're getting close to outfitting every vehicle with shotguns and rifles. It's either or, shotgun or rifles.
And just for a little bit more clarity, the ones that were not recommended are not necessarily anything anyone says are not needed.
I get it.
But as we had to prioritize and went through the exercise, but again, when I see something like that, I think, okay, well, maybe we can squeeze that in the current year that we're in, so hopefully you'll see some of that occur.
And City Manager, I don't think anybody up here is disagreeing with your methodology, but citizens are looking at this, and if they see it's not funded, they may not have the information that we're getting today or that we got during our one-on-ones. So perception to them is quite different than the reality of it. And when I see not funded for something as vital as this, I think it's sending a mixed message, and I don't want that mixed message out there. That's all. So I would like to see this get funded sooner rather than later, but, all right, so now I'm going to move on to something else that kind of ties in. There's two SLAs, page 111, I'm sorry, budget proposals, I'll get you a quarter, we're going to get a Debbie Quarter Fund, 2609, for telecommunications equipment. When I was reading this, quite a few questions came to my mind about a switchover of technology that the county instituted that we were required to update, but not all of the personnel, our supervisors of 911, were not able to update. And I'm wondering, walk me through that whole process. Walk me through that changeover for the county and the technology.
So the county went to a whole new system.
When did they do that?
Probably a year ago, probably a year ago. And so we were forced to go over to the system with them because that's the only way we can receive these calls. And in doing so, the new system didn't have all the bells and whistles that the old system had. So before, our supervisors were able to receive those 911 calls at their desk stations, but with this new system, it doesn't allow that without purchasing this bridge or this switch or whatever, just technology, you know, it's techno talk. So it's just new software, didn't have the same parameters that the other one had.
So when I'm reading this, supervisors aren't able to tap into what their personnel are doing.
Correct.
And monitor that, maybe pick up a call and kind of help with a very high-level kind of call.
Correct.
They can't do it in real time, they have to, like, get up and find another computer to use and stuff. That's inefficient.
Correct.
Especially with 911. And that is a tool that not only is an efficient tool, but is a life safety tool that needs to be corrected, in my mind. We got to give them the right tools. It's paramount. If we have to give police officers body cameras and armor, we have to give 911 the right tools so that they can take care of things expeditiously as possible. So that brings me to my next question. The 911 telecommunications, you're asking for one more on page 88, budget proposal 2478. I was looking at the vacancy report, and I have to admit, I was very, very saddened to see that there's five vacancies in that department. And I know that you had a pop-up job fair to try and hire more people. We really got to make sure we're doing everything we can to hire 911 communicators. I don't know what more can be done, but if you're having constraints hiring and have five vacancies, getting one more, that's an insurmountable mountain that we have to climb. And I feel like we're kind of having deja vu to all the vacancies in the Police Department, and we figured ways to fix that problem, and we were able to get some of those vacancies filled years and years ago. We got to do something to correct this. So maybe we, maybe you can share some ideas?
Well, not to cut you off, but I just want to say that, you know, you're looking at a snapshot of...
Of course.
...of what we have right now. If you would have asked us six months ago, we were full.
Right.
So, you know, everything comes in waves.
Of course.
And we've had some people leave the department to move back home because of family and health issues.
They can't afford it.
So the tsunami hit us all at once, and which created some of those vacancies. So currently, we have five people in background right now with the five open positions, but it's a continuous wave. But if you look, this is a national problem.
Exactly.
That people are having a hard time hiring telecommunications. So our percentages are actually above our local partners as far as who needs vacancies. So I'm 100% confident and comfortable that our telecommunications center will be staffed.
I, you know, we recently increased police pay because they're a vital need in our community. Maybe we need to look at that. I know we just did a pay study, I don't know, I don't remember if it included 911 operators, if this increase in salary included 911 operators. Maybe that's something that can be looked at, and we can get some more information for next month, and maybe next month you'll be coming back and going, Commissioner McDowell, we filled them all, yay!
So like I said, we have five people in background, and I'm confident that hopefully that all five people will pass background. City Manager's been very aggressive with this topic because he knows how important this issue is, so I'm confident that we'll staff these.
Okay.
I just also want to add, telecommunications are a part of the CBA.
I'm sorry, oh, they're part of, part of the...
They are part of the CBA.
Okay, so...
So they, you know, it is a contractual position, like they're bargaining.
Okay.
Commissioner, they were looked at, we looked at it as globally as the whole entire...
Correct.
Telecom and police. And police were ranked second to third highest at, you know, last year, you know, at that time, and then we became dead last in the region. Telecommunication sits right now at second highest paid between Charlotte, Sarasota County and Manatee County, third if you include Pinellas County. So there, you know, there's a good spread between them and Sarasota County Sheriff's Office right now, but they're also 911 EMS call takers, there's a little difference there, but they're very competitive, and we go back to the table with the union in May, which definitely they'll be taking another look at, and come October 1 of next year, we'll start a new CBA contract.
Well, thank you.
The thing is, is it's a very difficult position.
That is.
And, you know, we do hire people, they do come in there, and then they figure out that this is not for me. You know, when you have people committing suicide on the telephone with them, and you have other tragedies that are occurring over the telephone, and it wears on people, and people decide that, you know, this isn't for me. And then we also have people that we've hired that just don't cut it, and we're not going to lower our standards just to fill a hole. Our citizens are worth a lot more than that, so we have a great staff over there, and they're kicking butt.
Absolutely, yeah, but when I see that the supervisors can't jump in and that they're filling the voids because of the overtime and the lack of position, I'm sorry, lack of personnel, I had to, I had to make it part of this budget discussion. I would be remiss if I did not, I would not be doing what I feel is part of my responsibility. So thank you very much for the conversation, Mayor. That is all the questions that I do have on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Emmerich.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Emrich.
Yeah, I'm going to reiterate what Commissioner Stokes has said. You guys are phenomenal when it comes to the community and engagement out there. And for all your sacrifices, thank you so very much, each and every one of you. Going forward, I know one of the things that's in the budget is do the right thing, and I would probably be beaten if I don't go home and say something about it. But as the city grows, we may need to look at maybe different avenues and different things on how that whole project is going to be done with police and Kiwanis and how we take care of the kids. And there may be a lot more kids. So just in the future, we may have to look at that budget procedure and what we go through. And along with Commissioner McDowell, I was upset about not seeing those shotguns funded because, Chief, you promised me one for up here in case we had an active shooter. You know, and but getting onto that, and this is a little bit off budget, but we need to get back to our active shooter training. I've said that with with City Manager Fletcher, and it has to be department-wide in this building to where everybody has that. And y'all do a phenomenal training. I've been through it. We just need to get back to it. Things are winding down from Ian. We got a whole different culture out there now, and we've got new employees that may not know what to do or where to go if that took place. So I just wanted to throw that out while I had y'all's attention because it is very important, and it is the safety of the employees that I that I am concerned about, so.
The Commissioner, that is in the works right now. Our staff is working with the City Manager's office on dates and times for the training. So that has been one of the priorities that the City Manager is also put on us. So it's in the works.
Thank you so very much.
The really tough thing about going last is there's very little new to say, and I'm pretty tough on my fellow commissioners that they bring new thoughts and insights and not be repetitive. And it's always tough following Commissioner Yoda, oh, excuse me, Commissioner, Commissioner Stokes, because he's so eloquent in his praise. So just ditto for me. One of the things I'm sorry to not see is the shoot house. Chief, you and I had a conversation about that last year, and you so generously gave it up. And I sort of had it in my heart that we'd address it this year, but with Ian and some of the other demands and the new police headquarters and all of that.
Remember, I sacrificed that for the prior department.
I know you did. I do remember that. Is anyone here, yes?
I just want to put that on record.
But at some point, we'll get to it. So it seems recently, I've just been getting a lot of complaints from residents about speeders. So I'm really glad that we're going to do more speed measurement, measure signs, but is there any way we can integrate it with cameras so we can get the, well?
Interesting. So we are looking at, City Manager, and I had a discussion about this. We are looking at, the state law just changed to allow speed cameras in school zones. So we are currently looking at that process and how we could bring that into Northport, actually putting speed cameras in our school zones. I think it's, it's definitely worth it for the safety of our children.
Yeah, yeah. And in other areas too, it just seems Tropicare is a problem area. Some of the Cranberry neighborhoods are.
Outside of that, speed detection cameras are not allowed in Florida other than.
In school zones.
Right. What a shame. What a shame. Okay, and and just a comment on recruiting, and you're probably doing this anyway, but I can remember our having a conversation that a lot of times officers who come from certain other areas of the country really appreciate and really can't believe the kind of culture and respect that this department has in the community. So I would only hope that we would have some targeted recruiting in some of those areas that don't appreciate their police force. So just, I'm sure you're doing it, but.
I'm going to say it, recruiting for this police department is not an issue for us, believe it or not. So, you know, because of what you guys have done and support from the City Manager's office, we have people waiting to come here. They're waiting for our budget to get approved for these new positions, and they want to come here in October. So people want to come here.
Perfect. That's great. So Commissioner McDowell, will you have a final comment?
I just got to piggyback off what you said. This is refreshing news. Six years ago, it was a totally different culture, a totally different scenario, and I am so glad that it's changed. And I'm really, really grateful to the citizens who, I would, I would, if I had to guess, I would bet 90 to 95% of the citizens support you guys, 100%. The other five to 10, it's because maybe they wound up on the wrong side of the police car. So, good job. Thank you.
I'm extremely proud to be the chair here, but the men and women of the Northport Police Department, whether they're sworn or non-sworn, they work their asses off here for the citizens.
Oh, don't say that word, you might get gavel.
People actually.
I didn't gavel you, Commissioner, so I won't gavel, Chief.
Actually cares, you know, and I'm not, I can't say that that's always across the board in other areas, but our cops care, our civilian staff care. I think that's the big difference.
It does show.
Thank you.
Awesome. Any public comment on this item, City Clerk? Then let's move on to our, oh.
Well, as they transition out, I just want to make one point. We always talk about the impact of Ian on the citizens, but, you know, thinking about, you know, Ms. Harris and her situation in the Country Club Bridge, I believe. You know, there were people who sacrificed and went through what they were going through, and some of the others at this leadership table as well, while they were still serving the citizens. It was great the way they rallied around their own, but we forget, well, not forget, we don't automatically associate our employees as citizens who are going through some of those same situations. So we're grateful for everything that everyone did and how you were able to keep going and serving the public during times of your own need.
Thank you for that, City Manager. Okay.
Y'all were supposed to transition.
Economic Development, item 23-1003. Come on down. City Manager, you're up.
I didn't see him in the button, Chief. What about my boat?
Where's my tasers?
Economic Development. Yes. So, and hey, well, I'm sitting here like a cool thing. All right. So Economic Development, as we said, of course, this is the name of one of our pillars, but we firmly are in agreement that the positions that you identified last year reduce the need for multiple or new positions this year. We are now working through the program of economic development. When we talk about the actual Hurricane Ian recovery, and I'll let our interim manager, Ms. Mascherano, discuss it further, but when we talk about the business relief call center following the hurricane, that was extremely important. Our business community reaching out to them in a way that was immediate, was extremely valued. I know the business community is still suffering overall. I still think in my mind, there's some other plans that we can do to help them, whether it relates to, you know, facade improvements or infrastructure integrity, things that we can sort of help with them. But the thing I'll say about it, that entrepreneurial community, that last little bullet, you know, we got the word that, you know, the hive went down and they needed a space, and none of us had an answer. This city is 104 square miles, but I promise you, there is not a lot of extra infrastructure this city has to offer. And naturally, people think that we do, based on our size. They're like, well, don't you have a building somewhere or a room or something? And it's really hard for us to put our finger on. So the convener of those conversations and being in the middle of those, I think the community has felt value in that. And as our last meetings over there with State College of Florida and them identifying some programs that are no longer active, they have some space that could help us in the short term. While we look for some longer-term solutions, I think that is moving down the right pathway and getting some of the entrepreneurial and the business community in this city back up on its feet. I think that's so important, and I think that we all know that based on the growth of this city, that those needs are only going to increase. So we thank you for being involved in those conversations and knowing that as we still work with Mr. Greg Rade regarding the grant program that we're trying to apply for this summer, keeps moving along the pathway that will get your continued support as the need we're still trying to take care of. And I'll stop there, Dave, if you want to, some of the efforts of yourself or your team.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, City Manager. So, yeah, after after the hurricane and the residential call center began to wind down, we reactivated that call center and made outbound calls to about 1,200 Northport businesses, making sure that they were okay and finding out what their situations were and letting them know about resources, resources to help with any workers that were displaced, resources to help around with FEMA and the Department of Economic Opportunity at the state level and Career Source locally here, and making sure that we mailed out, not only email, not only called them, but mailed them as well with postcards that had links and phone numbers that would be beneficial following a storm like that. We did some site visits with our with our community partners like Career Source that has grant monies available to help with training around hurricane relief and response. Our team has been undergoing training and will be involved in the Emergency Operations Center, will be involved in the Joint Communications Center and in the Residential Call Center. And depending upon the severity and of the next storm, probably we'll be activating that call center again because we had a best practice format with the Business Relief Call Center. It worked out really well, so.
As we talked about the org chart, like I said, there's no new additions there. We're still in the process of just making sure we get the right people in the right seats, and that just comes with a little bit of trial and error, but we're happy to have HR support us and help us along the way. The Economic Development ranked by priorities, those are nothing new that you haven't seen because they have a pillar for economic development. So it's pretty much straightforward as to how we're trying to execute on that pillar. You know, the performance measures, and I know that there can be a lot as it relates back to economic development, what I want to say is, it's been the approach of the team that sort of has shifted in the last, you know, nine to 12 or six to 10 months-ish, where when we get to the point of not being able to close a deal, we don't just walk away. There's a point there of trying to make sure that we continue to be that aggressive and pushing on to make it happen. We don't want people to think that just because we come to the table and we can't come to an initial agreement that the, there's not a deal to be made there. We know that the community wants a diversity of things here, whether it's eating options, whether it's shopping options, and, you know, everything that we do is not just new to well-known park area, but the options and ideas that we have that are on the legacy side of Northport, we will hope to see more of those come to fruition in the very near future. We need businesses here. We need that. We cannot say that enough. We're talking about the commercial development. We're talking about what people want when they want to be here. We've got to find a way to make it happen. So the the energy of the team and the performance measures of attracting businesses, working with our EDC partners, is non-stop, and I'm very proud of some of that. And I think right now of, you know, Vin Derson and some of the conversations we've had with re-engaging them on some activities that didn't sort of work the first time. That was fine, but then what about the second time? What about the third time? So we're still making sure that people know that we're open for business, and I think that's an important message to send. And you've sent that message loud and clear by giving them the resources they need to do that. Some of these other performance measures talk about the websites and the hits and how we are using social media. That communication is directly tied in a dotted line to Jason Barlone and his team, and they work very well together to make sure that there's no duplication, but synergy there so that we can ensure that economic development continues to grow. But it is a priority, and I think that based on the efforts of the current leadership on staff and on commission, we are proving that hopefully on a daily basis. Economic Development, vision by Budisumery right there, as I just went over. But when we talk about the budget proposals, we do need to be out, and we do have to sell ourselves. I think you may remember me saying last year that we need to be aggressive in what we do. We do want to be at the forefront of getting people here and not waiting for things to fall in our lap. And knowing what just happened at the state level with the Interpol's Florida, which folded under into another department, which I think reduces the ability for it to support us, is the short version of me saying that means even more that we need to make sure that we do what we're supposed to do. I think I remember me saying last year that we wanted to control our own destiny, and I think that's what we're doing. We don't want to wake up one day and say, well, who's who's knocking on doors for us? We're knocking on doors for ourselves. That means getting out to this national conference and making sure that our name and our our brand, as was mentioned earlier, is out there for the world to know. The video marketing mailers, I think that was a great idea as it relates to the innovation through the department based on what we're seeing in order to keep us relevant in ways that people can easily easily relate to. People will appreciate that. What we did not recommend in here was the Retail Attraction and Development Study. We do believe that as we move forward and as we've gotten a lot of things under our belt this year, as the new leadership comes into this role, we'll have a different plan about how to execute on that to get this. It doesn't mean that we are not doing this, we just want to try a different pathway to get it. And in this current year, what we needed was the ability to do the entrepreneurial, yes, Entrepreneurship Center study, which went with the great, with which went with the grant request with Greg Rade. One had, you had to have the feasibility study before you could apply for the grant. That's why we've been in that pathway, because if we didn't, then you couldn't apply for it. But knowing what we're all trying to accomplish and knowing where we're all going, we felt it was in the best pathway for the division, and we're happy to do that. Oh, I think that's the end. And I, so I think that's the end of the actual slides today, and happy to answer any questions about our economic development actions.
Thank you for that. I'm opening up the floor, Commissioner Stokes.
Yes, well, being an advocate of economic development, I have to say, you guys have been doing a great job, and we need more of it. We need a stronger department. We need to grow this department. I can't emphasize it enough. We have to move that 8% up to 10, 12, 14, 16, 20, and so on. You know, especially in light of what I see at the county and state levels. As I'll echo, City Manager, we have to advocate for ourselves. We have to be the one out there knocking on doors and attracting people to our city. But the only other thing I did want to mention is, I think, and I don't know if it's a combination of our Economic Development Department and/or Communications Department as well as interfacing with our Chamber to help them see some of the larger economic development vision we have here in the city. I think, you know, while Chamber is one of my favorite groups, and and I spend as much time with them as I can, they are, tend to be smaller-sized businesses, and and I think it would be helpful if they have a better awareness of some of our overall visions as far as economic development on a larger scale. I think that they can then help be a better partner in helping to develop and grow. But other than that, you guys are doing a great job with the resources you have. Keep plugging, and and it is a department I think needs to continue to grow, and we need to continue to devote dollars to. It is of paramount importance if we are going to keep our tax base balanced between residential and non-residential in the city. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, the only question I have, and I'm not sure if this is for your department, I see a budget proposal in here for the Retail Attraction and Development Study, and I understand that it's not funded for this year. But if money becomes available, it will then be funded, and you guys will do it. I'm curious, when are we going to do Activity Center 6? Because to me, and help me understand where I might be going awry, if we had an Activity Center 6 master plan completed, that may help with being able to include that area with an approved master plan with this Retail Attraction Study. To me, it's kind of putting this study before before it's necessary because we don't have the entire master plans done for the entire city because a very large future component has not been planned yet. And I know we took the money for Activity Center 3 to do for Activity Center, I'm sorry, Activity Center 6 for Activity Center 3, but we've got to get Activity Center 6 back into the Center Six back into the budget and back on the priority level before we do this. So help me understand why this needs to come before Activity Center Six.
We wanted to move it over to Activity Center Three to get out ahead of coming of SMH Hospital.
Correct, and I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm wondering why is this study in here instead of master plan for Activity Center Six?
I think that we'd like to do both. As we approach 100,000 residents, that MSA, that target number is sort of a real ping and activator and catalyst to undergo that retail study. In the meantime, we are conducting several activities in lieu of that retail study to make do. Activity Center Six is extremely important. We have a single landowner out there. We've worked very closely with him and he's doing his due diligence and a master plan and a developer's agreement, a master plan for that area will be coming. And it is something that is top of mind in economic development as we work closely with Development Services and Public Works and Utilities.
Activity Center Six study is very important, but that is a little bit more of a longer burn than our immediate need for retail. It is very important, but that has a longer development time than say what we're trying to achieve with everything that's happening with the rezoning and with there's sort of more a hospital on some. So I would say that the sequencing that's being proposed is adequate based off of the long lead time that the Yorkshire Project, Rain Tree Project is going to take.
And just to be clear, there are two different conversations here. The retail study, which is not funded, is separate from the reallocation of the money from Activity Center Six, Yorkshire, to the Activity Center for the hospital. The Activity Center Six funding that was reallocated is now scheduled for fiscal year 25, which would be better in alignment with what Assistant Yarborough just said as the actual outcome needed. So it hasn't been forgotten. It was just sort of shifted, but the retail study itself, I don't want that to be confused with how we got to where we are with the Activity Center Master Plans.
And I'm grateful for the conversation, but I'm going to politely disagree. We want to increase our job opportunities. We are never going to get that done if we just keep focusing on retail. And Activity Center Six opens up a wider variety of jobs in the city, higher paying jobs. You don't have to turn on the news every day, but at least once a week, how you hear more retail jobs, more retail jobs, more retail jobs. Retail doesn't pay as well as some of these other jobs. A lot of people can't afford to live here if they're on retail salaries. So in my opinion, and by no means am I the expert, so I'm relying on you to convince me otherwise, we've got to put Activity Center Six in the budget to show that it is a priority. By leaving it out, shows it's not. Again, it's that perception. And if it's planned to do something in fiscal year 2025, you said, put it in CIP because it's going to be over $50,000. Put it in the CIP. Show that it's a priority. Otherwise, it's not and it's going to stay on that cutting floor and we're never going to get it done and we're going to just have more and more and more retail jobs.
Let me just add one other thing, again, Assistant Yarborough, Assistant City Manager. There's one large property owner, Activity Center Six. There's other properties along, but there's an 800 pound grower, for lack of a better word. And I think we'll have a golden opportunity because it's in their vested interest as well to have a master plan for the Activity Center Six. So it may not be the city that ponies up all the money or that it could very well be us in partnership with that large property owner in order to do a master plan for that area. I think there's a lot of interesting opportunities, but yeah, I think staff has definitely heard your perspective on it.
Are you done, Commissioner?
I am, thank you.
Vice Mayor White.
Yes, thank you for bringing up the, when you made the calls to businesses during Ian, I was the recipient of one of those calls. And that was a really pleasant surprise that you did that. I don't remember that ever being done before. Was that, no, no. I mean, for any reason, for anybody to contact us to say, hey, how you doing? And I think that goes to saying how much of a turnaround there's been because Northport had a reputation of not being business friendly. Don't know where that came from, but, oh, you don't. But, you know, that to me speaks volumes of how we have reached out in all avenues, not just in getting the big box stores here, but remembering the smaller business owners as well. And I find it interesting when people, some people today still say it's kind of like not, they appreciate the business, but at the same time, they're saying, oh, there's too much development. So like, what do you want? Do you want the businesses in here or not? So, because there's things happening all over and I just have to give kudos to the fact that we have an economic development department. That was a big thing that when we got that, but the fact that you've taken it, you've taken hold of it and just went running with it to think outside the box and to do things. So thank you so much for what you do.
Commissioner Emrich.
Yes, thank you for everything that you guys do. And here's the deal, you guys are pretty much on the starting gate right now on how the city's been turning and where we're heading. And not only are you going to be able to attract businesses, it all goes with rooftops and population and they've got their numbers before they even come in, but y'all have the opportunity to also manage what the commercial atmosphere is going to look like within the city and that's exciting. And that's going to be all up to you to go out and they'll, a lot of them will come to you, but when you go out and you go, we'd really like you down here. And that's all part of negotiation and stuff and that's what's exciting because you can say, hey, we're going to get X and everybody goes, yeah. Well, it's not a parts store, but it's like we are a community of people that travel for their work, just like Commissioner McDowell was talking about jobs. We travel to Fort Myers. We travel to Sarasota. Cars break down. It's a no-brainer to have a parts store here, you know? So in the future, we'll have more restaurants, we'll have more entertainment, you know, warehouse jobs, whatever the case may be, professional jobs with the hospital. Everything's coming and we're right at the cusp of starting to do that. So congratulations. I have my full faith in y'all and I know y'all will do a great job. So thank you very much.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. I guess it's my turn. I need to echo Commissioner McDowell. Having our plan pulled together for the Shires is so vitally important. I think we would all agree that most of the other activity centers got away from us and we have a lot of things that have happened there that would not have been our preference. So I don't want that area to get away with us. And I also think this city having the ability to share a vision of what we see happening out there will be very useful in attracting the kinds of businesses that come with jobs and career paths and benefits and all of that good things. So, I mean, it's really your take, what happens now and what happens next year. But I agree, at the very least, let's see a CIP for that so that it doesn't get neglected. But I would really like to push, if it's at all possible, pulling that activity into this year or, you know, I'm aware that there's a lot of buying and selling going on out there and there's residential development popping out there. I just don't want to see our industrial opportunity get away from us. The retail study, I know retail doesn't bring the kinds of jobs that other kinds of industries bring, but our local businesses lose, what, $730 million a year? Retail leakage, I think, is what it's called. That gives our city a real black eye, you know, when restaurants, the kind of restaurants would like to see here and other kinds of retail, we want to see here when they look at the demographics of the city and what's going on from an economic point of view. I think that's a big deterrent. Of course, it's chicken and the egg. If they were here, people wouldn't go elsewhere to get that nice dinner, but you sort of see where it's going. So I would hope that a master plan for the Shires and a retail initiative, it wouldn't have to be an either or, I think both are very, very important. Maybe that 100,000 is the trigger point at which a retail study becomes important, but we're growing so fast and it takes the study so darn long to be finished that I think if we started it this year, by the time we hit 100,000, we'd be cranked and ready to go. So just food for thought. I do have a real concern with your budget that you don't have enough money in it to be proactive and to be able to project the kind of image that the city would like to project when we go outside of the city to recruit. Just a couple of things that pop into mind. I know you have in your budget attendance at a couple of conferences. My question is, are you attending only or do we have the capability to exhibit? Are we exhibiting at these shows so that we have a presence that people can go to?
We have plans to exhibit at the retail conference, which is why we want to take at least four staff members because you have to man that booth. And then it's like speed dating.
Do we have a booth? Do we have a, I know we have some banners, but do we have a really professional booth that we can take to these shows?
Yes, we have that budgeted.
Because I didn't see it. Did I miss it?
Caitlin Griffin, Business Services Coordinator. I believe it's included in that budget proposal. Part of it is the
Which one?
Budget proposal 2425. Part of it is to attend the conference and part of it is the materials to create the booth.
Okay. Okay. It's not a lot of money and I know how much it costs to exhibit at some of these shows. We have target industries, so I would like to see us at a big manufacturing show with a nice booth. We would need to do some direct mail and invitations and maybe a cocktail party and kind of, you know, attract, identify and attract businesses that are thinking of relocating and being there with a nice professional presence. So that's just one thought or one idea and I do not see the money anywhere in your budget to support that kind of thing. Another area is print. When we go outside the city, we have got to be City Manager slick and professional in our approach. And what sort of burns in my brain, you guys put together a really nice, I forget what you called it, but it was a multi-page colorful brochure kind of selling the city. It was stapled. We really need to have a nice, you need money in your budget for print and I think Mr. Bartolone, I wish he was still here, you guys need to be attached at the hip from a professional branding point of view. And I hate direct mail, but we might, we might have to do that kind of thing. So I'm just, I love you guys and you do great work. I just want to make sure you have enough money in your budget to be really proactive in your efforts. Commissioner McDowell.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to see about getting the consensus to include Activity Center Six in the budget.
Before you do that, let me just add one more thing to Activity Center Six. It's outside the urban service boundary area. Nothing is going to happen until that is addressed by this commission. And more importantly, water and sewer are several, several miles away. Without water and sewer, nothing is going to happen. So I'm not, I'm not trying to discourage you. I'm trying to tell you, you have time, but do with it as you will.
Right, right.
In your consensus, if you do include it, Commissioner McDowell, can we put it in CIP so it's not?
Yeah, and I recognize we, we've got a lot of work to do, but if we don't show that it's a priority in our budget, it's not a priority then. That's where I'm going with it.
Do you, do you need direction on creating a CIP sheet for that plan?
Yes, I think it would be helpful for all of us to keep our eye on it and that way we don't distract.
Yes. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I'd like to get a consensus to instruct the City Manager to create a CIP sheet for Activity Center Six master planning, urban service boundary planning, comp plan changes, everything that's associated with it.
Commissioner Stokes.
I'm good with that.
I'm a resounding yes, Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Commissioner Emrich.
Yeah, I'm a yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Oh, we should have done public comment before that. Yes, City Clerk? Okay, we've got that covered. Final on the agenda, do we have any general public comment on this meeting, City Clerk? What is she named? Commissioner McDowell?
Yeah, since we got done early, and I'm just curious, tomorrow looks pretty darn packed. Are we going to have a conversation about the utility tax? Are we going to have a conversation about the water and lieu of tax? I mean, when will that happen? I just don't want it to get forgotten about.
I feel like both those are intertwined into departmental conversations, but I don't think they stand alone as conversations, but we are definitely going to have them before we wrap up tomorrow. Do we think we can weave them into utilities?
Because it's all general fund related. It's not related to anything else but general fund. Maybe we have it now while we've got time because it's 2:00. We're scheduled here till 5:00.
Do we have the right people here and can we?
You don't have anybody.
But it's not utilities.
Let's do it. Yep, we say let's do it. Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, it's my understanding, the water and lieu of tax and whatever that thing is, it's not benefiting utilities. It's only benefiting the general fund.
We lumping it together from a technical subject matter.
Expertise, yes.
But if we can have it now, let's have it. Let's go.
I sense you have comments, Commissioner?
I'd like to hear the City Manager's thought process and purpose of including it in this year's budget for both. So let's
We need the money.
We need the money. So from my standpoint and our standpoint, as I kick it off from our team, I know Assistant City Manager Yarborough and our finance team has worked closely on the proposal to put it in front of you. We are, and without putting that slide back on our screen, we are at a point where we are trying to play catch-up. We are at a point where we are looking for opportunities for us to be very responsible with the citizens and let them understand that while we have had to make sacrifices and choices, and this is just one of them, as we make sure that we're better prepared to support the city. It is not in any sort of direction to say that we don't understand the economic crisis that I think all of us are going through, but at the same time, I think that if you look back and say, well, why wasn't this done before? Why hasn't it been raised before? The answer is going to be very simple. It was not the right time. And our, my response to that is there's never going to be the right time for anything and I can almost guarantee you that that would be the case if we were not to adopt it this year going forward. If we don't adopt it this year going forward and the next year, something happens that is outside of our expected control, then, you know, we're going to be looking at maybe a miller rate and we're going to say, well, you know what? We can't do it this year. Or you would be kicking the can down the road from this year and then doing it next year if you don't have a miller rate increase. But I think that what I would say, based on the information that we know at the time that we know it, our decision and recommendation is to continue to raise it. It could only go to the 10% of the electricity tax. That's as high as it can go. There's a threshold there and I believe 75% of the other municipalities have already gotten there faster than us. And with the other tax of the 5%, it has a threshold, I want to say of 10% total, am I right? tax of the 5%, it has a threshold, I want to say of 10% total, am I right? And introducing it halfway to 5% seems like the compromise, thank you, the compromise of understanding that we need to make sure that we are exploring all the options to make sure that all of the citizens and residents get the services that they need. That's a short version of what I would say. Anyone else want to say anything else before the Commission asked question? I miss you, ma'am. Or you want to... There you go, Director.
So I think one other point is, we always compare ourselves to the locals as well as our comparable cities and the services that we provide, the variety of them, the quality of them. And so we also want to compare ourselves to them in the revenue that we're bringing in to support those services.
So weigh in, fellow commissioners, what you're thinking. I see Vice Mayor's finger at heading to the... Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I agree with everything that I am on.
No, no, I think it was me.
Okay. What they said, especially that when we do compare and other people talk about other municipalities, we have to be on a level playing field. So this does put it up there. Also, and this was brought up last year, too, is that the electric bills, we can control our, our electric usage. You know, big houses, you're going to have a bigger bill, and that's your decision, and you're, and that's what you have to, you know, to pay. I have to say, I, my electric bills are pretty, pretty small. Now, I wouldn't say small, but they're not what people are saying that they're paying. I also have a very shaded house, yes.
That's a fact.
Yeah, but, you know, so you can control what you're going to end up paying in different ways. I control it with trees, okay? But that's, that's what you can do. Also, I was just curious, when, what, do we have it, where that, how that progressed, that was it always charged? Or was there a time when it wasn't? We didn't have that utility tax?
Electricity?
Yeah. Did we, is there a time that we didn't put that on there and then what year did it come on?
I think that was new with you, Assistant City Manager, correct? To budget?
No, we've always had it. It was 2%.
2%, and we went up to 6%.
It was 6% last year.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Two years ago.
Did we raise it last year?
All right, no.
No, we didn't, that's right. We didn't raise anything last year.
So it was always 2, and then it went up to 6?
Right.
All right, because I was also thinking in terms of when we had that big millage rate spike, that that, I don't know what their thinking was, why that wasn't considered to maybe, maybe, I'm not interested in knowing why now, because that's passed, but I'm just thinking, you know, that maybe would have softened that blow. So this is what we're trying to, to deal with.
Without being here, to me, the increase of, I think it was 13% of the millage rate increase, it allowed you to tackle a lot at one time. You didn't have to piecemeal it where someone would say, well, you, you nickel and dime me here on a millage rate and then you raise the electricity tax and you're here. If we just did a millage rate 13%, we can do it, that's what we need.
Right.
We're done with it. Me, that's the advantage of, of doing something that high. I, of course, do not recommend us doing that, but I, if that's the thought process, I think that might answer the question.
Right. And is, is 10% the highest it can go?
It is.
Okay, so this way, we, we're going to know what our parameters are. That's it. We're maxed out with that. So now we're going to have to deal with other fun ways to...
Every other jurisdiction except for us and Longboat Key are at the 10%.
Yes, that's what I noticed on that chart.
They're at 0. Everyone else is at 10%.
Yes, and Longboat Key only because their property values are really high. Yeah.
Correct. They don't suffer from...
Right, and they also only have, I think, 30, the last time I, we were at that school board thing, 30 students from, they only had 30 students from...
Right, total, total.
To school.
In the entire town.
The one advantage of, of these particular, they're based off of consumption, so the resident, the citizen has some control, whereas with the property tax, they have no control.
Right, and that's what I mean. That is still some, something that we can all individually control, and if you don't, well, you're going to pay a higher bill. It's, it's that it. So that's my thought on that. Thank you.
Commissioner Stokes.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, I'm more an advocate. I'll, I'll echo what Mr. Yarborough says, you know, consumption taxes make a lot more sense to me. They, they are somewhat controllable. The reality is, too, we, we, we've acknowledged that going on now four years, we're keeping this millage rate flat, and we're not going to be able to most likely be able to continue to do that. So I, I'm supportive of the idea of, of addressing these types of user-related taxes now or fees now, so that we don't have to double dip it and, and hit people with both millage rate increases and these as we go forward. We are leaving something on the table here by not going all the way up, and everyone else hasn't. And I know there's been question out in the community, you know, about like, well, so we're raising taxes just so we can be equitable with like the neighbors, and it really isn't that. It's that we are playing catch-up here, and we, we badly need these revenues in order to keep pace with our growth and not have to put the burden further on property taxes as we develop economically and have the ability to shift some of that. So, you know, it's, it's, it's a, it's more than a simple one item thing. And so, you know, I'm clearly in support of this, and I, I think it's the right move to go, right direction to go.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McDowell.
We have a philosophical difference on our hands, and I know I'm on the minority. But when you're increasing 50-plus employees in one year after doing it last year, too, roundabout, to me, that, that means that we can, we can cut things. If, if you do this 4% tax now, we cannot go any higher. If we do this water in lieu of tax thing, whatever the official name is, and put it at 5%, you can only go up 5% more. You are not going to have any other tools available to you when, when the market dictates we have to raise the millage rate. So while you're saying you want to increase it now so that we don't have to raise the millage rate, what are you going to do when we have to raise the millage rate so high and that we have everybody here again? We have got to monitor the spending. And I know that City Manager said that there were things on the floor that were cut. I am not looking at the floor because I wasn't part of those conversations. I'm looking at this budget, and I'm seeing 50 new employees. And the City Manager at the very beginning said that he used the 16.9% increase in taxable values to balance the budget. That's not entirely true. He's using that 4% in the FPL tax and the 5% in the lieu of taxes. Otherwise, he wouldn't have been able to balance the budget with everything that's in here. You, I asked, you said it was in the budget.
Oh, no, I'm saying...
You can cut things, you can cut, exactly. You can balance the budget without them.
You wanted to appoint Commissioner where you have to sacrifice service level. And what we're seeing is that even though your point is valid of us raising these taxes to a point where even if we're not going to compare them to other places, even if we're not going to say what we should have done, the need for these taxes to help us be a part of the equation of how we balance the budget is important. What I don't want people to believe is, well, you could have balanced it without the extra $4 million in money you received from the assessed values, the extra $2 million that these taxes represent. It's a, it's a formula of them all, and we suffered ourselves as we went through the exercise to make sure that we had what people would say skin of the game is. And we just didn't say, well, give us $2 million out of our reserves. Well, the reserves are lower because of the hurricane and other factors. Well, we don't care. Let's just put it in here and pull it in here. We thought we presented a very deliberate and thoughtful way to make sure that we handle some of the issues of the past while protecting the present and then making you aware of what the future would look like if we do have to raise millage rate increases. So I just want to make sure, whatever your decision is as a, a Commissioner and as a board, that you know that it was a lot of thought that went into these decisions and to how we got to the budget in front of us.
And, sir, I'm never discounting that. I know that there was a lot of thought, and I know that there was a lot of conversations. This is our first. And, and I, I just, this is a tool that we relied on in 2021 to balance the budget because of the effects of COVID. And, and that is why, and I remember the conversation, staff wanted to go directly, hop right up to that 10%, and we had a huge discussion. And we debated for, oh, gosh, at least an hour about the pros and cons, and we, we compromised to find a middle ground because these are our citizens that are paying this. And we have increases, not only to the FPL taxes, we have increases on now the water. I'm not going to see that tax because I don't pay city water. We have a road and drainage assessment going up, solid waste is going up, and water and the utilities is going up. We cannot keep taxing our residents. They already can't afford to live here. There's a lot of them leaving because they can't afford the taxes that they have to pay and the costs of living here. Rents are so high. Insurance keeps going up. These are effects that our citizens are feeling. And to me, I'm sorry, we have a duty to try and bare bones as much as we can. And when I see 50 new positions after hearing for the past six months, that's not going to happen this fiscal year, and it did, I, I take concern to that. So I rest my case. You know where I'm going to go, and we'll probably have to get a consensus, Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Stokes.
Well, it's very easy to say, let's not increase taxes at all.
I didn't say that.
And that is what you're saying. And let's just instead cut the budget. Well, there's 43 people that we went through a portion of today. What are the consequences of doing that? Let's say, let's not hire any new police officers, okay? What would be the consequence of that action? And the reality is, that's where the bulk of the dollars are. They are needed. There's not even a thought that they shouldn't be hired. The reality is, we have pay increases we need to do because we need to stay competitive. We talked about all these things all day long, to turn around and make the statements, well, in order to balance the budget, we shouldn't increase our consumption taxes, and rather we should look to cut the budget. Well, that just sounds great in theory, but where exactly are you going to cut it? And, you know, it's easy to say it in generalities, but I don't see where that can be done and at the same time meet the needs of our city and maintain the service levels that we and our citizens expect. So the reality is, we have our choice. Want to raise the millage rate? Let's raise the millage rate and not raise consumption taxes. No matter how you figure it, there is going to be an increased cost of running this city as we grow and expand. And until we develop economically to the point where we can generate huge amounts of revenue, non-residential revenue, tax revenue, we are going to do this on the backs of our residential taxpayers. The trade-off is cut services, close down parks, shut the city, shave it down. Is that where Northport's going? I don't really think so. I certainly wouldn't support it. I don't think anybody else would support it. So the reality is, which pocket do you want to pay it out of? And I think that what's fair is to say in a year now, the fourth year we've kept this millage rate flat, we need to take advantage of the user taxes, the consumption taxes, we can bring them up to the levels that we're comfortable with. And then as we move forward in the next handful of years, we're going to see incremental millage rate increases. I don't see how you can avoid it over the next handful of years. And, you know, it's, I, I, you know, it's easy to say, let's just cut. You show me where, show me where. We have a whole city government working on putting together a tight budget that balances. By all means, if anybody can show where we're going to save 2, 3, 4, $5 million out of this budget by cutting and not sacrificing services or quality of life, I'm all ears, but I don't see it. I don't see it. Anyway, that's all I got to say.
Yeah, I'll tell you, I, I hate following Commissioner Stokes because he's in my head and he has to get out. But, but just a few thoughts. My, my observation of Northport has been that we have not properly funded city operations for a very long time. And we've been growing for a long time, certainly not as dramatically as we've grown in the past couple of years. But this city has been growing. I got here in 2014, and it's been growing at a steady pace ever since. And for whatever reasons, we've not addressed really big issues. And is it the rooster that comes back to roost? I think it is. Now we are dealing with all of that. I also wasn't expecting so many new headcounts. We, we were very, very generous last year, but as I look at those personnel requests, I, I don't see one, maybe one, that I would cut. So I'm, I'm sort of with Commissioner Stokes in that. In today's conversation, we did identify several items that were funded that we wanted, that were not funded, that we wanted to see funded. So you can't have it both ways. And one of the other realities of our situation, and this applies to any municipality in the state, over time, state statutes have eliminated and reduced our options for generating taxes, and we just don't have a lot of options. So where does it come from? I certainly don't want to raise millage rates. I don't want to raise anything, but if, we've all been experiencing the impact of inflation, and city government is no different. And because we are so heavily skewed to infrastructure and construction, given where the city is in its growth curve, those are industries that have been incredibly inflationary over the past few years. And so city operations are really feeling the impact of inflation in a very, very significant way. And so we either cut service or we raise revenue, we increase revenue, we can't do, we can't maintain a certain level of service and, and cut our ability to fund those services. So while I, I may not like it, I, I think someone also mentioned, it might have been Vice Mayor, that when we look at utility and water, we do have as residents of the city some, some element of control over those things. I lost my air conditioner Saturday night and didn't get it back until Sunday around 5 or 6 o'clock, and it was 90 degrees in my house. And I have so bonded with my ceiling fans, and I've got to believe that running the ceiling fans are a lot cheaper than running my air conditioner. So I'm exploring keeping my temperature at 79 and 80 and maybe using a ceiling fan to achieve that. So while I, I don't like raising anything, I do feel as though I have some level of control. I am on city water. I don't irrigate, although I have irrigation. And I'm trying to figure out how I fix that. I just thank the heavens that I don't have a swimming pool, because they're so expensive to run. But anyway, that's enough for me. Yes.
Can I just reply to...
Comment, absolutely. Go ahead.
Just for perspective, Commissioner McDowell, the, the employee request for fiscal year '22 was about 48. Fiscal year '23, the year that we're in, that's the 50 number that you referenced. And this number that we have right now is 43, I believe.
Plus what? Plus Warmale Springs.
No, we're, the, the information that we have provided regarding our FTE count is 43. It's not including what may happen with Warmale Springs and the decision that you might have going forward.
But it's in the budget. But it's in the budget.
It can be in the budget, but it's not.
It is in the budget.
It is in the budget, ma'am, but it is not in the number of headcount that we are specifically telling you that we are requesting from you right now. And I don't want to start combining numbers in two different areas in two different places.
And I thought that was a temporary agency, if I can.
It is, but if it becomes permanent because of a decision that we make, then that would, of course, be your decision at that time. But since our numbers are so close and small here with 48, 50, and 48, 50, and 43, I don't want 43 to get rounded up to 50, is what I'm trying to say. But in my conversations, I took out public safety from those numbers because it is what it is. And then you start talking about the other funds that generate enough revenue to pay for their employees. They are what they are. But then you get to the seven people that I'm asking for this year. And yes, I was advised, you may not want to ask for those seven people in positions. But instead of bringing to you a problem, I tried to figure out a solution, which was to say, how can we cut within ourselves so that we don't have to ask for money from this particular fund to then support that request? To me, that's where, that's where we actually made the compromise to say, okay, this is how we can get it done. And then, the last thing I'll say is, when you said people are leaving the city, the population of this city is actually growing. We're going in the right direction. And I, without speaking to anyone who left, wants to leave or desires to leave, I don't think anyone is pointing back and looking and saying, I'm leaving because of that electricity tax the city is charging. I believe they're leaving because of a big confluence of factors that the city, county, state, and country are going through right now. And I don't want us to sort of be the ones who have to bear a global burden of something of a national, I think I called it earlier, economic crisis that we're all having to work through together.
Okay. Commissioner, thank you for that, city manager. Commissioner Emmerich.
Yeah, I was on the board when we adjusted it from 2% to 6%. I was in favor of it then. I'm in favor of it now because it is up to the user and everything like that. But one thing that I think that we're forgetting up here when we talk about bringing it up to snuff and what we need, we've constantly been screaming and yelling that we've left money on the table when it comes to transportation impact fees, you know, and stuff like that too. So we're constantly screaming and yelling, saying, we need this money, we need this money. And you have your options. You can either go with the military rate, we're going to get that money. You can cut services. Then you're going to have people screaming and yelling out there, well, you cut this service for what, 20 bucks on a year, 40 bucks on a year, whatever it equates to? It's not a win-win situation. It's an adjustment to where the citizen can maybe adjust what they're doing, like the mayor said, I ain't going to her house for dinner. But, you know, you can, I can even put my house up a couple of degrees at different times and save money and adjust it that way. I think we just need to be more conscious on what we choose to do within our own homes. The water fee is just going to affect the water users. It doesn't affect the city as a whole. So to start out at 5% on that, I'm in agreement with, and we're raising it 4%. We are going to have to adjust the mileage rates going forward, maybe next year, the year after, on a maybe small incline going throughout the way things work. But once we get those other fees online, it may not be as cumbersome. And we do need to start now because if we're always chasing the eight ball, we're always going to be behind, and it's going to be a bigger punch to the gut when you have to adjust rates. So you got to start somewhere. And I'm in favor of doing this. And I know I'm not making a whole ton of friends out there, but it makes sense to me to start now and be able to adjust throughout the future. So that's all I have, Mayor.
And just keep in mind, as we increase our commercial footprint, it starts taking some of the pressure off us. That's why it is so important for us to do that. Commissioner McDowell, are you going for a census?
No.
Consensus? Do you have something new to say?
I just, I'd love to know what the plan's going to be when you have no other resources available and you have to raise mileage rate to meet the level of service and new employees required and stuff. Growth is supposed to pay for growth, and we keep adding things that. I'm just wasting my breath. So get your consensus, Mayor.
Who is so moved? Thank you, Vice Mayor.
If I think I know what we're going for here, I'd like a consensus to raise the utility tax to 10%. Is that what it's called? Utility?
Electric.
Electric. Thank you. Electric rate from 6% to 10%.
Okay.
I'm a yes, obviously.
Obviously. Commissioner Emmerich? I'm a yes.
I'm a yes.
Commissioner Stokes, Commissioner McDowell?
Nope.
That consensus passes 4 to 1. And then, there's also the water.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, yes. Vote for the water?
Yeah, what are we going to, 5?
What is that? We're going to 5 on the water. Where are we currently?
Zero.
Zero.
Yeah, I would ask for a consensus that we go to 5% on the water.
Commissioner McDowell.
I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
There's a whole process that has to be followed to do that, institute this new tax because it's a new tax. What is the start date going to be for this utility tax, this new water tax? Because it's not in the budget. It just says the tax. It didn't say what the effective date would be.
So if we institute it as the public service tax on water, then the start date on that would be?
October 1st?
April 1st.
No, there's no way you're going to get the paperwork done.
Right. Because it requires 120 days notice to the Department of Revenue, and then it has to start on the 1st of a quarter. The way we put it in here was because we are the ones that bill for water, we put it in here as payment in lieu of that. So that would mean we notify utilities, and that's how we, we don't do the whole Department of Revenue notice in that more formal process.
So you do have to notify DOR or you don't?
It'll be part of our normal rate notifications of rate increases for the water. It'll be part of that normal process.
So DOR is not being notified?
Nothing to do with DOR.
Okay.
This is in lieu of using the public service tax on water.
So what's the 120 days notice that you mentioned?
So with the way we put it in here, it would start 10-1. If we do it with the 120 days notice, starting on the quarter, then it would be April 1st when it would start.
There's two different ways to do it.
Yes.
The traditional way, or you can do it in a pilot, in the payment in lieu of tax way, which is, doesn't have all that time constraint. You don't involve the DOR.
So what would be the start date of payment in lieu of tax?
October 1.
And how do you notify the citizens of this?
The traditional, how we do it for any rate increase, I think it's notified on their bill. It's also the water bill.
I don't know, because like I said, I'm not a customer, so I don't know how this would get noticed to them so that they know.
Yep.
Now, is it just?
We'll confirm that, but I'm pretty sure that's how we traditionally do it, is on the water bill.
Is this just on the water portion of the bill, or is it on the water and sewer portion of the bill?
On the water.
This is just for the people watching? Thank you.
I have a question, though, about.
You don't want to restate it?
Can I ask a question about that?
Go ahead.
The two different dates, I'm not, what's, is there an advantage to doing it one way as opposed to the other way? I don't understand because you said one way is October 1st, one way would be April 1st, but it's, it still would be a 5% increase, but it's how it's listed?
There's no difference in the amount it will generate other than the one we can start 10-1.
Because?
The other we'd have to, because there is not that whole process where we have to notify Department of Revenue 120 days in advance and then start it at the beginning of a quarter.
Because we have home rule authority, and you can do something called a pilot. You have home rule authority. Or you could do it the public service tax way.
Right.
But they're going to generate the same amount of money. One's got less red tape. We're the ones that had less red tape.
But either way, the money that you receive is not going to involve the DOR anyway, Department of Revenue, or is it?
The one we chose is the one with less red tape. It's a lot less administrative burden to implement it, and we can do it faster. So that means for this one year alone, it generates more money because we started in October instead of waiting until April. The years after that, they both would generate the same amount of money. But the one way, we have a lot more administrative to do, notify Department of Revenue. The other way, it's an internal.
Well, it just sounds like there's no advantage to doing it the other way. Why would anybody do it the other way? I don't know.
Well, if it was the electric tax, we don't, we're not the ones that bill the electric tax. So that involves Florida Power.
Oh.
So it's a little bit different because we are the ones that are in charge of the water.
All right. Question answered. Thank you.
Commissioner McDowell, did that information help you with your vote?
I just have a follow-up question. Is any of our utility water customers exempt from this?
I'm not aware of an exemption.
I'm just asking the question.
It will be on the water bill. I'm not aware of an exemption. I don't believe so.
You confirm that?
Because that would mean they would get free water, and we're prohibited from doing that.
We all voted except for Commissioner McDowell. She has questions.
Because I had questions about the effective date, which proved to be very helpful.
We get it.
And absolutely, no.
Okay. So that consensus passes 4 to 1 for the date.
But the consensus didn't say which kind of tax, if we're going with DOR or if we're doing payment in lieu of, so maybe we need to redo it for, just to be on the safe side that we're doing.
I don't think so. I think that is an implementation detail that is within the purview of staff to determine unless someone has information to contradict that.
And I think we've got it outlined in your document as the introduction of a payment in lieu of utility tax on water. So that's what we're asking.
So we're done. We're done. City clerk, is there any general public comment before we close this proceeding? I think I know the answer to it. Okay. Then it is 242, and I am adjourning the city commission workshop.